The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Good morning, everybody. We begin, as usual, with an acknowledgement of country. I wish to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Iora nation, the traditional custodians of the land upon which Commissioner Ryan and I are located. I also acknowledge the Turbo and Jaggera nations upon whose lands our hearing room in Brisbane is located, where Commissioner Atkinson is, and the ruined, deranged people of the Kulin nation upon whose lands Commissioner Galbally is located today. I pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as well as to all First Nations people who are viewing this hearing on the live stream. Today, as you will know, is Human Rights Day. It is the 70th anniversary of the proclamation by the United Nations of Human Rights Day. The Declaration of Human Rights itself was adopted by the United Nations in 1948. I now invite Ms Eastman to make a statement in respect of Human Rights Day.
Good morning, Commissioners and good morning, everyone, following the live broadcast. Today, we acknowledge and celebrate Human Rights Day. Seventy-two years ago, on 10 December 1948, on a cold day in Paris, the United Nations General Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. The Universal Declaration expressly recognises human rights that are relevant to the issues that we are exploring in the Royal Commission this week. These are relevant to issues of economic participation and employment. And while the language seventy-two years later may seem a little old-fashioned and perhaps not gender-inclusive, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights recognises that everyone has the right to a standard of living adequate for the health and wellbeing of himself and his family, including food, clothing, housing, medical care and necessary social services, and a right to security in the event of unemployment, sickness, disability, widowhood, old age and other lack of livelihood in circumstances beyond his control. The Universal Declaration provides that everyone has the right to work, to free choice of employment, to just and favourable conditions of work and to protection against unemployment. The Declaration says everyone without discrimination has the right to equal pay for equal work. And finally, everyone who works has the right to just and favourable remuneration, ensuring for himself and his family an existence worthy of human dignity and supplemented, if necessary, by other means of social protection. Now, many people may be unaware that it was a person with disability who planted the seed for the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. As the Second World War was coming to an end in Europe and the leaders of the United States, the United Kingdom, the Soviet Union and China met together, they agreed to establish a United Nations with the aim of securing lasting international peace and security. President Franklin Delano Roosevelt, FDR as he's commonly known, was the President of the United States and he wanted to include a commitment to human rights in the development of and the ongoing work of the United Nations. President Roosevelt died before peace came and before the United Nations was established. However, his widow, Mrs Eleanor Roosevelt, was appointed to chair the new Human Rights Commission of the United Nations. And the Commission's task, its first task under her leadership, was to write a Bill of Rights for the United Nations. And it's that work that concluded with the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. President Roosevelt had what we would now describe as an acquired disability. In 1921, when he was 39 years old, he contracted polio and thereafter lived with a mobility disability. Echoing some of the themes that we've heard in the evidence this week, he tried to hide his disability, not always successfully. And after a period of recuperation, he returned to work. In 1928, he was elected the Governor of New York. In 1932, he was elected President and he assumed the office of President during the time of the Great Depression. He won four presidential elections and died in office in April 1945. His commitment to human rights was longstanding. Now, the language of human rights was probably not known in the 1930s and 1940s and the language used at that time may be different to the way we would describe human rights today. But the core values that underpin human rights were shaped by him during this period. In August 1935, he introduced the Social Security Act into the United States. This was a significant step and it created a right to social security. The Act introduced old age benefits and then enabled several states, and the language again here might be jarring for the reasons, I think Catherine McAlpine spoke to us a little earlier in the week. But the Act introduced a process that enabled for more adequate provision for aged persons, blind persons, dependent and crippled children, maternal and child welfare and public health. In 1944, when he delivered the State of the Union address, President Roosevelt spoke about the United States adopting a second Bill of Rights. Now, we all know about the Bill of Rights in the United States and even in Australia, we've heard of things like taking the fifth. But he thought that the United States was ready for a new Bill of Rights. And he said this: "We have come to a clear realisation of the fact that true individual freedom cannot exist without economic security and independence." And he advocated the need to guarantee in law the following rights: the right to a useful and remunerative job; the right to earn enough to provide adequate food and clothing and recreation; the right of every family to a decent home; the right to adequate medical care and the opportunity to achieve and enjoy good health; the right to adequate protection from the economic fears of old age, sickness, accident and unemployment; and the right to a good education." He said this: "All of these rights spell security and after this war is won, we must be prepared to move forward in the implementation of these rights to new goals of human happiness and wellbeing." This year's Human Rights Day has the theme of Recover Better, Stand Up For Human Rights. With the COVID-19 pandemic front of mind, this theme asks us to look forward but to ask how we can build back better with human rights at the centre. The United Nations has expressed concern today of its concern that the COVID-19 pandemic has been fuelled by deepening poverty, rising inequality and structural and entrenched discrimination. The United Nations says that to recover from the current crisis, we must also address the inequality pandemic. For that, it says this: "We need to promote and protect economic, social and cultural rights. We need a new social contract for a new era." Maybe these words are a little of history repeating. Sometimes it is valuable to look back and reflect on history. President Roosevelt's commitment to human rights also grew from an economic crisis and a period of great hardship. He considered human rights, including economic participation, needed to be at the centre of the nation's recovery and indeed, the international community's recovery after the Second World War. The inclusion of the perspective of a person with lived experience with disability, such as President Roosevelt, no doubt made a difference and will continue to do so. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms Eastman. We'll now proceed to the day's regular hearing. Ms Eastman, again.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm very pleased to say that our first witnesses this morning include Charlene, who's here in the hearing room with us in Sydney, and Charlene's mother, Kit Owen Turner. I think the first thing is to take their affirmations.
Thank you very much. Just before we take the affirmation, I'll explain where everybody is, as you can see on the screen. We have Commissioner Galbally, who is in Melbourne. I'm not sure if you can see that screen. She is on the right-hand bottom corner of that screen. In the left-hand bottom corner is Commissioner Atkinson, who is in our Brisbane hearing room, who just waved. And here is Commissioner Ryan, who is sitting with me. And my name is Ronald Sackville and I am the Chair of the Royal Commission. What I'd like you to do now, please, is just to listen carefully to the instructions of my associate, who's sitting just there, and she will administer the affirmation to you. Thank you very much.
I will read you both the affirmation. At the end, please both say yes. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Charlene and Ms Owen Turner. And thank you both very much for coming to the Royal Commission today in Sydney to give your evidence. I'll now ask Ms Eastman to ask you some questions.
Well, good morning to both of you. And we have decided that Charlene will go first this morning and we're going to have a conversation about some of Charlene's experience. So, Charlene, you've helped me this morning by photocopying some notes that you prepared about what you'd like to talk to the Royal Commission about. And I might just ask mum to just move the microphone a little so I can hear you.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Okay.
And you've got your notes open and you've made me a photocopy and we're going to work through those notes together. Is that okay?
Okay.
All right, so I'm on question one. When you completed high school, what did you want to do or be?
I wanted to work in an office and I wanted to go to college to learn.
And I want to ask you about the training programme. So, question number two is you want me to ask you this. What do you do each day at the training programme?
I do file management and scan documents. I also have group meetings and one-on-one sessions.
And you also go to TAFE. So, the next question I'm going to ask you is number three. What do you like about TAFE?
Okay, I like to learn. I learnt office skills, my teachers and peers are all very nice.
So, we turn over the page. Now, what don't you like about TAFE?
Nothing.
Nothing?
I like going to TAFE because it helps me learn.
And about the training programme, what do you like about the training programme? That's question number five.
I like to learn and work. I also like it when I achieve my goals.
Now, I'm scared to ask this question, but what don't you like about the training programme?
Nothing. I enjoy working.
Now, what are your favourite things to do on the weekends and after you get home each day?
I like to paint, sing and dance. I also like to read books and work on my spreadsheets on my computer. I also like to collect business cards.
All right, so Charlene, that's a shout out to everybody that anybody here at the Royal Commission today, if they've got business cards, you'll collect them and then you put the business cards into the spreadsheet on the computer.
Okay.
I just want to put some record that Charlene already has my business card.
Thank you.
Charlene, my final question, number eight. I want to ask you this. What do you want to do once you've finished at TAFE and at the training programme?
I want to be a private banker and work in an office like my mum.
Okay. So, thank you for telling us you want to be a private banker and work in an office like your mum. So, I've got to ask your mum some questions. So, you are Kit Owen Turner and you are a private banker?
Yes.
And you're Charlene's mum?
Yes, that's correct.
And I might just ask you just to keep your voice up a little bit.
Yep.
And you've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission?
Yes.
And the Royal Commission has a copy of the statement and what you've said in the statement is true?
That's correct, yeah.
Now, Commissioners, you have a copy of Ms Owen Turner's statement in tab 12 of tender bundle A and if you could mark the statement exhibit 19... sorry, 9.19.
Yes, thank you, that can be done.
And the copy that you have has got a couple of different dates, the 24th of November and the 23rd of November.
Sorry, that was my mistake.
But the statement was signed on the 23rd of November and the 24th should be taken on the final page as a typo.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Now, you've said to us in starting your evidence that Charlene, at the age of 20, is very determined and focused. And I think we've seen that today, she'd like to be a private banker. And whenever you've asked Charlene about what she would like to do in the future, she's made it pretty clear that she'd like to work in an office.
Yeah, that's true.
And when did this start, Ms Owen Turner? That Charlene wished to work in an office?
I think it's pretty much at a very young age. So, Charlene would witness me on the phone constantly or on the computer, working away and that sort of developed her interest in working on computers. And also, she likes to talk to clients because that's what she hears me do all the time and she'll do pretend calls, hello clients. But so generally, you know, like I say, I'm pretty realist in a lot of ways and I know that's probably something that's a bit of a stretch. So, you know, I did ask her, you know, what do you like about being a private banker, about what I do? And it's about the computers really and about the client relations. So, I was thinking, you know, more of an office is what her real interest is because she probably doesn't really know what I do in depth.
And just talking a little bit about Charlene's experience at school. So, she completed high school, is that right?
Yes, yes.
And tell us a little bit about what Charlene's time at school was like. And Charlene, if you want to jump in at any time, please do as mum's talking.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, varied. It varied a lot from primary through to high school. We've had some challenges in the primary before she started because there was a few reasons, as you probably could imagine with, you know, children like Charlene. And a lot of it were from the very beginning and it was a bit of a real eye-opener as to what the experience would be moving forward and how I needed to adjust and cope with that as a parent. I think the key thing with the education piece was a lot of it were really pleasant. She had really good memories, especially when she was in year six, where she had one-on-one support and she was pretty much the only child with special needs left from her unit because they tried to shut it down. That was a very pleasant experience that we had to basically bring forward to the Discrimination Board and all that sort of stuff. But, you know, the teachers are always very, very supportive and they try their very best to help but sometimes they're also limited in what they can do.
And what about high school? Were there ever any discussions at high school about what Charlene might do when she left school?
Yes, so the head teacher would help us try and transition Charlene as she's readying herself to leave year 12. We had, you know, meetings with the councillors and they're also trying to help me navigate what's next. Yeah, so that's how we came about where she's at now.
Did you get a sense from those final years at school about whether open employment was something that might be available for Charlene or did you get a sense that you might have been directed in a particular direction?
Yes.
You've talked about this in your statement a little bit. Tell us about that.
So, a lot of it, I felt that, well, most of the children or people in her situation leaving high school are pretty much directed to employment, training programmes, whereas Charlene is kind of different. She wanted to, you know, to go to college, as she says. She went to go to university and I really obviously wanted to fulfil what she wanted to do. And yeah, so she ended up at TAFE.
When she was in year 12, she went into what is called the SLEZ programme through the NDIS. That's the School Leavers Employment Supports Programme. And what were you told about that programme and what were your expectations of that programme?
So, it really is a funding programme. So, basically, she will have two years' worth of funding to find any training programme she would be interested in. And hopefully, you know, it's enough to get her to whatever employment she can get herself into. And yeah, so she's finished that up now this year.
So, in terms of what happened to Charlene after you left school, you had two streams. You had the Social Enterprise Training Programme and also going to TAFE.
Yes.
And so, let me ask you a little bit about the Social Enterprise, where the training programme occurred. So, Charlene's attended the Social Enterprise three days a week, is that right?
So, are you referring to while she was in high school to transition or after?
I'm just... So, I'm on paragraph 10 of the statement, if that's a helpful reminder about where we're up to?
Yes, that's correct. So, she does go to the training programme three days a week.
And she's been going to that particular Social Enterprise Training Programme for two years?
That's correct.
So, what's a typical day like at the training programme for Charlene?
So, Charlene will have a group session in the morning and they'll have a catch-up on what the plan is for the day and then they'll get allocated their work, whether that would be file management or scanning. And they'll have their normal breaks. Then she'll have a one-on-one session as well to sort of break down the topic of the week at her level, an individual level. And that's pretty much it. Am I right, Char? Is there anything else? Is that... That's what you do?
Yeah, I was saying I want to...
Yeah, okay.
And in terms of what Charlene has learned, she's told us a little earlier that she likes the training programme. There's nothing that she doesn't like. What's your view about how the training programme has increased Charlene's skills or helped her develop new skills?
Yeah, so it's helped Charlene in terms of interaction, you know, enhancing her knowledge in the scanning and office behaviours, that sort of stuff. But with my view, it's the best that she can... The best, I guess, training provider that she can have with what she... in line with her goal. The downside is it's an hour away from our house. So, we have to sort of make the trip. But, you know, it is what it is. If that's what's going to help her moving forward, you're just going to have to do it.
And Charlene's been, I think, quite competitive and she enjoys the competition, even in the training programme, to do the very best that she can.
Yeah, so that's part of the reason why I also agreed to keep her at the training programme that she's in now because they have six stages. So, the beginning is really, you know, I'm stapling documents and then getting it ready for the next person to do the scanning. And as you get better at each stage, you just progress and she gets really excited and it pushes her a little bit more when she can, you know, move forward. And that's also the other reason also that I chose this particular training programme for her is it's more for higher-functioning individuals and I feel that that would stretch Charlene and help her reach her capacity, her full capacity more so than there's another training programme 10 minutes away from us, which is more of a day programme. It wouldn't really... It'll be a lot of fun but it won't really help her get where she wants to get to because it's more catered for higher-needs individuals.
It sounds like Charlene has mastered the art of the spreadsheet, which may be beyond many of us. And so, she loves... Like, you love computers, don't you, Charlene?
Yes. I would do... I would do spreadsheet, like, to organise, like, a full name.
Yep. So, each of the business cards that you get, you put a person's name into the spreadsheet, their address into the spreadsheet and you keep all of that detail and you check the spreadsheets.
Yes, I do. That's what I do.
Now, Ms Owen Turner, I think you've said in your statement also that there's some downsides of the training programme. One is just the distance from your home and that commitment from a family perspective of making sure that Charlene gets there in time. And that's had an impact on your work as well, is that right?
Yeah, so I was fortunate enough to work in an environment where there's flexibility. So, I can be a little bit later because I have to hit traffic as I get back into the city. But yeah, so it does have an impact because a part of my role, I need to do the work myself as the, I guess, the main person for the portfolio that I manage. I do end up working extended hours to compensate for the travel.
And have you looked at transport options for Charlene to travel independently to the training programme?
Yes, I have. It's not that easy to find that support that would also cover the funding that she's been allocated. As you would imagine, it's a long distance and it can get quite, you know, expensive. But yeah, so I have looked.
And you had an expectation that for Charlene, that once she completes this particular training programme, that she might have got a job at that particular social enterprise, is that right?
Yes.
And is that what's going to happen?
Well, I did clarify that quite recently as well. That was my initial understanding. But now, it's more around hitting... Like, there's a milestone that they need to hit before they can, you know, I guess, qualify them as, you know, they're employable on their own, independently. I think with Charlene, she's got a fair bit to go from our last meeting. And the expectation was, well, the clarification was, they'll try and fitter in if they can but it's very difficult because you need to wait for someone to leave before they can slaughter into that role. And the other part to it is if there is a role that they find elsewhere, you know, maybe a bank or an office of some sort, then they'll try and accommodate. But it's not really something that they have to do, I guess.
And have you had any discussion with the Social Enterprise delivering the training programme about what happens at the end of the training programme in terms of finding Charlene employment and what type of employment options might be opened?
Yeah, I did speak with Charlene's team leader. We had that discussion and it's pretty much that what I just said earlier on. They'll try and fitter in if they can. So, she'll go from trainee to trainer, which some have managed to achieve, but it's very limited. And also, in terms of employment, if she's lucky enough. Some get spotted online, you know, and they get employment in that sense. So, it's... There's a bit of luck there.
Now, you also have a very strong view that in addition to the training programme, which has that skills-based focus, that you also want Charlene to continue her education.
Absolutely. Charlene is very keen to learn. Absolutely. Shalene is very keen to learn and I think she said it numerous times. I had to write it down for her because she said she has a tendency to digress, so just to keep her focused. But those are her words, pretty much. Shalene is very consistent in a lot of ways and she wants to learn. She always tells me that. And that's why it's a little bit heartbreaking when she initially said she wanted to go to university. I knew it wasn't.
So, and Shalene, you've told us this morning that there's nothing that you don't like about TAFE, you really like going to TAFE.
About it, it is okay. I like to learn, to help people.
You like to help people. So Ms Owen Turner, tell us a little bit about the TAFE course that you thought might be a course that would meet Shalene's ambitions to work in an office. Is there a course at TAFE that allows Shalene to pursue those interests?
Yeah, so the year before and this year, Shalene's been going to TAFE. And it's more around office skills, you know, office behaviours, mock job interviews, which is in line with what she does at the training programme. So I just thought that that would complement, so that's how I sort of built her week.
So the TAFE course, what was, is two days a week?
It was originally two days a week and that course finished a year ago. And I was advised that she was no longer going to be re-enrolled in that particular course.
What happened?
Well, I panicked a bit because she's not, you know, as much as Shalene has completed the day, she had to be there and also completed the curriculum, some of them. There were still some skill gaps there that she hasn't really, wasn't incompetent based on the transcript. So, you know, my idea was if this is the only option she had, I would rather she continued doing it again, even though some of it would be quite repetitive. At least it reinforces the learning and it sinks in in a lot of ways. But I was advised that that was not possible because there's only one unit in this particular TAFE and that there's more students coming through, graduating, that would need the spot, which I completely understood. But again, my primary obligation is to Shalene to try and find her something else. So I guess pestered them a lot and, you know, I said, what about if I put her in a basic computer class in the mainstream and, you know, and they said, but I knew she wasn't going to cope on her own. And, you know, if I, you know, if I find someone that can support her, would that be okay? Apparently, it's against TAFE policy, so that window was shut. So I had to, you know, find out, so what do I do now? There's got to be something for her. You know, it's a little bit unfortunate because for any other individual, if you wanted to be a doctor, a lawyer, you've got avenues. You can choose, you know, there's a vast array of opportunities and options for you. But I felt that there wasn't much for her. And so.
That's okay. We'll take your time. And if you need a break, that's absolutely fine.
So eventually she got into another TAFE. And yeah, so, and I got great news as well on Monday.
Yes, so tell us what happened on Monday.
She's going to be re-enrolled again this year, the following years, which is great.
And so one of the things for you is this ambition for Shalene to be independent and to fulfil her wishes and ambition. At the same time, how do you make sure that you can find the right opportunities for her? And sometimes there's that tension, isn't there, about how do we do that?
Well, I find, I found that I pretty much had to, once she finished high school, I was pretty much on my own, trying to navigate and find out, you know, support for her or, you know, how to get into more studies, further studies. You know, I think one of her challenges and her difficulties as a person with Down's Syndrome is it takes longer to learn. So I think there should be an individual programme for her, for people like her that can help transition and get to that stable work environment that they can actually sustain.
You've also had some private tutoring for Shalene. So one of her former teachers
That's correct.
has come to work with Shalene and the two of them worked together on communication and reading. So Shalene, today when you wrote out, you wrote out the questions that you wanted me to ask and you wrote the answers and you highlighted. And as you were reading, you had your finger going through to make sure that you didn't speak too quickly.
I do.
And so you've really, you've practised a lot before coming to give evidence because you didn't want to speak too quickly and you wanted everybody to hear everything you wanted to say, is that right?
Yeah, yes.
Ms Owen Turner, can I ask you about the future? And this is something, I think, which really comes from your statement of these wish for a life of Shalene that meets her expectations and supporting Shalene in the choices that Shalene wants to make. What do you see the future holding?
It's a bit of a difficult question to answer, I guess. There's a want in what I see. If she continues on with the trajectory that she's in now, with family support, she will be okay. But to be completely independent, I think there's a lot of work there before she gets there. But what I want for her
It's okay.
is completely different. I want her to achieve what she wants to achieve. And be independent.
And part of that is to have the right supports in place?
That's correct, yes.
And those supports are not just you and your family, but also getting that right support from NDIS and the other supports, is that right?
That's right.
And you're a little nervous, aren't you, at the moment about the NDIS funding review that's coming up just before Christmas?
Yes.
Why are you nervous about that?
There's a lot of things that I'm hearing from other parents, you know, that have had their meetings. I'm hearing that they're cutting their funding, they're not getting the amount that they need for the level of support required by the individual. And I just, I'm not sure. It's basically, I'm not sure as to. Okay, thank you.
Shalene, would you like some more water? We can do that. I've got a spare jug here specially.
She just wants me to drink some more.
I would say, I need to help my mum. She's going to be after Edmund now.
We'll top you both up. Thank you, Shalene. So sorry, Ms Owen Turner, I interrupted you. So just that uncertainty about knowing what's happening. Where do you get information about the NDIS and the SLEZ scheme and these other government's supports? How do you find information?
A lot of the information I got from when she was in high school. And the rest of it, I pretty much made up on my own. Of what I can do, I just research online and then just listening to what other parents are doing. That's pretty much it. Until just a couple of days ago, I got in touch with a consultant and she was very helpful and she said she'll try and support, but that needs to be approved also to be funded because you have to pay her to do it.
And so you're hoping to get some certainty with the funding review so that you can make some decisions about what Shalene's next steps might be, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Now, you want, you have the firm view that Shalene can be a very productive member of the community if she just has the opportunity and is provided with the supports that she needs.
Absolutely. As you can see, she's a confident girl. She, you know, she just wants to do what she's, what she wants to do and what she's told to do. She absorbs information, she's kind and and she is generally just really, really helpful. She does try as much as she can. And I do believe that with the right level of support to transition to that independence and then employment, and employment, she would absolutely be a great addition, I guess. Forgot what I was going to say. She will definitely be a great contributor in society, absolutely.
Shalene, your mum's been doing a lot of talking and I've been talking to mum. Is there anything else you want to tell us today about what you'd like to do working into the future?
Okay, I want to help protect my mum because she was upset in my birthday. I was so worried.
I'm okay.
Well, she's okay. She's confident. She's an independent, reliable person.
So your mum's a pretty good person.
Yeah, I can look after her, like, I can have food, water.
And you also have a puppy that does a lot of barking, so you have to deal with that bad behaviour, is that right? You have to help mum with that too.
Yeah, I try, because her poops, I take water. She's a little bit sad. I try and help.
Can I thank you both very much for sharing your experiences with us today? And I think we'll really look forward to seeing what Shalene does in the future. And subject to, I think, the Chair's request to the government about the extension of the Royal Commission. I expect, Shalene, we might have to get you to come back and tell us how you're going in the next year or so. Would you come back and talk to us again?
Yeah, sure.
That'd be great. Thank you, Commissioners. And I'll just check, Shalene, I think I said to you, I've got four bosses today. And so the four bosses might want to ask your mum or you some questions, so I'll just check with them.
What I'll do, Shalene, is ask each of the Commissioners if they have a question. So I'll first ask Commissioner Galbally, who is on the screen from Melbourne, if she has any questions.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to thank you very much for your evidence and no questions today. Thank you.
And now I'll ask Commissioner Atkinson, who is in Brisbane.
No, thank you, Shalene, and thank you for showing so much concern for your mum.
That's all right.
I'll ask Commissioner Ryan now, who's with me.
Thank you both very much. I've learnt a lot from you today, but I don't have any further questions because you've explained yourselves so well, so thank you.
It's okay.
And I would like to thank you, Shalene, and you, Ms Owen Turner, for coming and giving evidence. Shalene, during these hearings, one of the things that's happened quite often is the questions have been asked and the answers have been very, very long. Your answers were brief, to the point and very clear. It was a pleasure to listen to you giving evidence. Thank you very much.
It's okay. I thank you.
So thank you both for coming and giving evidence to the Commission. It has been extraordinarily helpful to us. Thank you. And I wish you both all the best.
Thank you both very much. And Commissioners, today's a little bit different. It's Human Rights Day and I know some people may be wanting to tune in to the Human Rights Oration as well. So we're going to have a morning tea break a little bit earlier. And we thought we would break for, I'll just double-check, half an hour? Yeah, for half an hour to quarter to twelve.
Who's giving the Human Rights Oration?
Rosemary Kaye, who, Commissioners, you have heard give evidence on a number of occasions in this Royal Commission. And last year, she was awarded the Human Rights Medal. So the Australian Human Rights Commission have invited her back to give the oration this morning, which probably is about fifteen minutes in. All right, I'm giving you a very extra morning tea till midday Sydney time, eleven AM Brisbane time.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll adjourn until noon Sydney time, eleven AM Brisbane time. Thank you again.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Yes, Ms Zurna.
Referred to as Riley. Riley is giving evidence.
We don't have you, sorry, we don't have you on screen. Now we do, now we do, so all systems go.
No, Chair, actually, that wasn't Riley. So we're just waiting until Riley comes onto the screen. There we have Riley now.
Good morning, Riley. Oh, we can't hear Riley.
Good morning. How are you today?
Very well, thank you.
Chair, if we could ask the affirmation.
I'll now ask Ms Zurna to say something. Yes, we'll get it right in the end.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, if the affirmation or oath could be administered to Riley, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Riley, if you wouldn't mind following the instructions of Commissioner Atk, oh, sorry, of my associate. And she will administer the oath to you. Thank you very much.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Riley. And now Ms Zurna will ask you some questions.
Thank you, Chair. Riley, you have provided the Royal Commissioner a statement, haven't you?
Yes.
Have you, you've had the chance to read that recently?
Yes.
And the contents of that statement are true, aren't they?
Yes.
All right. I would ask that Riley's statement please be referred to. It's in tender bundle part A at tab thirteen. And I ask that the tender, that the statement is tendered into evidence and it is marked as exhibit nine point two O, please.
Yes, thank you. That can be done.
Thank you, Chair. Riley, you are a mother of two boys.
Yes, I am.
They've been diagnosed with ADHD and autism. And they were diagnosed at the ages of seven and eight, isn't that right?
Yes.
They're now teenagers?
Yes, going on thirty-five.
And being a mum of two boys with a disability, your primary focus has been to care for your boys, hasn't it?
Yes.
And it's the case that you were able to apply for a carer's pension in two thousand and twelve?
Yep, that's correct.
And in addition to caring for your boys, you've also wanted to work over that period of time, haven't you?
Yes.
And why has that, why has work been important to you?
For several reasons, not only the obvious financial gain, but also to show the boys that girls can work and do just as well as they can in the workforce. And also just to keep myself active and, you know, functioning more than just being a house mum and a wife.
And you live with a condition of scoliosis. That's right, isn't it?
Yes.
And there's been a deterioration over time. We'll come back to where things are at the moment. But it causes you some pain and it makes you have some physical limitations, is that right?
Yes.
Can you just tell us how your scoliosis affects you in physical activities when you are applying for work or undertaking employment?
So I'd say the biggest limitations are being able, not being able to sit for too long or stand for too long or lift heavy items and also not being able to bend. I find that if I bend quite a lot, I start to put bones out and that sort of thing. And also just daily wear and tear really impacts a lot on what I can do every day. Every day is different. And that not only affects my ability to do things at home, but also at work.
And I think you've said you have some, you have good days and you have bad days, is that right?
Yes.
All right. And it's the case, isn't it, that you've recently been diagnosed with autism level two, ADHD and some mental health issues with depression, is that right?
Yes, and I also have PTSD as well.
And they're recent diagnoses, and I'd like to come back to those a little bit later on. And they're recent diagnoses, and I'd like to come back to those a little bit later on and just explore with you at the moment what the impact of scoliosis has been for you, is that okay?
That's fine.
You say in your statement that you, um, have told employers in the past about your scoliosis. And you also say you like to be truthful, um, and not to lie by omission, to be upfront and honest. But it's the case, isn't it, that you've had to really think about, do I tell or do I not tell, is that right?
Definitely.
And in making that decision, what influences you as to whether you will disclose your disability or not?
So it might be, um, the vibe that I get off the person that I'm talking to, the interviewer. Um, it might be, um, what I previously know of the company. Um, also, it might be the working conditions. Um, but mostly what I perceive about the person interviewing me as a whole.
Mm-hmm. And, um, there's been occasions where you have disclosed and you've been successful and we'll come to those. But there's been a number of occasions where you have told an employer and you've not been successful. Can you tell us a little bit about those examples of when you've disclosed and what's happened?
Yes, um, I've had many times where, um, I've either called an employer about a position or I've gotten to an actual interview and I've told the employer about my back problem and, um, I've either been shut down and, and excluded from the interview almost immediately or I haven't made it to the next round of interviews. So I've had one primary interview and, and no more.
Mm-hmm. And have there been occasions where, for example, you might have a discussion over the telephone and you might disclose your disability and what happens in that regard?
Sometimes I've just been hung up on. Um, as soon as I say I've, I've got scoliosis, they're no longer interested in hiring me.
Mm-hmm. And, and how has that made you feel when you've disclosed your condition and then it hasn't progressed further?
Frustrated, um, angry, um, somewhat disadvantaged because I haven't been able to find work for myself. Um, and I haven't had that chance to use my life skills and my knowledge to help other people in the workplace, which is what I always try and do.
Mm-hmm. Can we turn to the positives? And there's been a few occasions where you've been, um, successful and you've been able to disclose to your employer about your scoliosis and what you, what impact that has upon you. And at paragraph seven of your statement, if you've got that in front of you there, um, there are a number of examples you set out there in paragraph seven.
Yep, I've got that in front of me.
And the first one was when you were employed in a factory. So can you tell us a little bit about what happened there and what the alternative, um, uh, role you were provided?
So in that position, uh, it was a, uh, a, a factory job in the food industry and, uh, they required that I lift twenty kilo, fifteen kilo boxes onto a pallet and keep stacking them until, uh, they were stacked above the height of my head, which I couldn't do. Uh, I told the, uh, floor manager at that time and he gave me the position up a little bit further on the line, which was, uh, to stick Disney characters onto the outside of cereal packets before they go into the box.
Mm-hmm.
So that was my primary job after I told him about the, after I told him about my back problem.
Mm-hmm. And you were able to manage that, um, workload once you'd made that disclosure and had that agreement with your employer?
Yes.
All right. And then moving on, you talk about working on a farm and that you indicated that you couldn't do planting or fertiliser, fertilising. As I understand, is that because of the bending over, et cetera?
Yes, um, and also the physical digging, because they expected you to plant trees as well. Um, so the alternative there was to help prune the trees in the winter. And then in the summer on that, on that farm, I would be moved to the cool room, to the packing department. But at that time, the, the cool room wasn't up and running, so they got me planting tr-, uh, pruning trees instead.
Okay. There's another job that's referred to there, which is the manufacturing job, and I'm going to come back that, come back to that a little bit later on if we can.
Yep.
We go on to the government department.
Yep.
Um, you went into that position, um, and you disclosed your disability, and what was the situation in that role?
So I was fitted with an ergonomic chair, which was just solely for use by me. And I was also given the option of walking up and down the length of the office, which was quite lengthy, uh, just when I needed to get up and move around.
Mm-hmm. And is that important in your condition of having those breaks and being able to move around?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I want to now move to an, another role that you've had or another job that you've had over the time, and that was with the fast food restaurant?
Yes.
Um, and you've outlined that in your statement. On this occasion, it was one of those decisions that you decided not to tell the employer that you had sc- scoliosis. Um, can you tell us why you decided on that occasion not to disclose?
So one of the ways that I primarily communicate is through my perception of other people using body language, tone of voice, environment, all those factors. Um, the interviewer at that stage to me, um, I didn't feel that I could trust him with that knowledge. So I chose not to disclose my scoliosis to that, um, actual individual, who was the franchisee of the fast food chain.
Okay. And you were able to get the job and you started the role initially, didn't you, and it was work that you could do with your condition?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
And you're, you were managing that, but then there was a change in the role and then that really affected you physically in relation to your condition, can you tell us a little bit about that?
So are we talking about the fast food window as well?
Yeah, so you changed roles within that position.
Yes, so the initial, uh, role was just serving customers, getting the orders ready in the, in the bag, um, changing bins, sweeping floors, looking after bathrooms. When I changed roles, I was expected to do all of those tasks as well as physically move through a gap of about six to eight inches, um, from one side of the restaurant to the other. And that proved difficult because it wasn't actually enough space for me to get through quick enough. Um, also, I had a headset that I had to wear where there was constant chatter from the drive-through window. And, um, I was expected to be able to not only serve customers at the front, but also listen to that headset and, and physically place orders and look after two different sections at once. So I felt that I could do the first role, no problem. As soon as the second role was added, it was just too much overwhelm for me and I couldn't complete it properly.
And you tried to have a discussion with your boss, didn't you, about the additional role? Um, can you tell us what happened when you had that discussion?
Yes, so my boss informed me that if I couldn't do the two roles at the same time every day, that my hours would drop significantly. Um, I was working four to five days a week, just a couple of hours a day during school hours. I went down to one or two days a week.
Mm-hmm. And did you feel comfortable or did you raise the issue about your condition as to how that was impacting upon you?
Can you please rephrase the question?
Did you raise it with your boss about how that additional role was impacting upon you physically and your, and how you were feeling?
Uh, I, I tried to tell him as much as I could because at that time, we didn't actually know about the ASD and the mental health role.
Mm-hmm.
That, that played in the overwhelm, so, um, I tried to tell him as much as I could, but it probably wasn't, um, a correct evaluation of what I was trying to say at that time.
Mm-hmm.
Probably missed the mask a bit.
And, uh, well, you just talked about there, the overwhelmed feeling. That's reflecting now back once you know the diagnosis, is that right, as to what that might have meant for you with that job?
Yes, now it makes sense. Back then, it didn't make sense why I couldn't manage the two. I just felt that it was very overwhelming and that I, for some reason, I couldn't juggle the two jobs, whereas I could only do one, but now it all makes sense.
Mm-hmm, all right. I want now to turn to a different topic, if I can, Riley, please, and I want to take you to your experience with the Disability Employment Services.
Yep.
Um, and in your statement, you indicate that you have used Disability Employment Services, um, on a couple of occasions, that's right?
Yes.
I want to take you to the manufacturing job, which I mentioned just a little bit earlier in your evidence.
Yes.
As I understand it, you saw an advertisement for the job?
Yes.
And then you contacted the organisation, can you tell us a little bit what happened and how then you contacted and started engaging with the Disability Employment Service?
Yes, so I found the position in my local paper. Um, and because I'm quite artistic, I thought that would be a good role for me. So I organised an interview with the CEO of the company. And, um, about twenty minutes later, after talking to him and showing him examples of my own work, he informed me that he didn't think the role was right for me and that, um, he thanked me for coming and, and speaking to him. So I was a little bit discouraged about that. Um, I went to the employment agency and I mentioned to them that I had been with an interview with this company and that I really wanted to work there because it was something that I'm interested in. And I got a very proactive, um, job consultant and they actually went and spoke to the manager of, um, the specific task that I was doing. Um, not the CEO, just the manager of, of, of the room. Um, and they organised to get me a trial, which was five days. And, um, did that and it looked like I was going to lose the job because I couldn't pick up the task quick enough.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I actually went outside and there was another element to the job that I could do and I felt that I would succeed at, so I asked if I could try that position instead. And I virtually did that position on my own, unsupervised for two and a half years.
Mm-hmm. And, and isn't it the case that you started training people after that, once you got into that role?
Yes, so the, uh, manager asked me to actually train a new girl um, and show her how to do all the tasks that I was doing.
Mm-hmm. Can I take you back when you finished that or you're coming to the end of that five-day trial?
Yes.
Um, how did you, you were feeling that perhaps it's not going to work out, but were you looking for other opportunities, were you?
I was because I knew that it was something that I could do. It was just, there were a couple of pointers, um, in the, in the other side of the job that I couldn't do. So one was working the computerised machine, I couldn't quite pick that up in five days. And one was lining logos up on clothing, I couldn't quite pick that up in five days.
Mm-hmm.
So I knew that if I switched to the other side of the job, I could quite reasonably do that on my own. Um, and I also felt that, uh, the manager was, um, watching over my shoulder all the time and, um, I felt quite nervous about that at the time. So in the other department of that job, she wasn't there, I could work unsupervised and I could basically, you know, just get it done when I felt like I could do it and, and not be constantly watched.
Mm-hmm.
Which made me feel a lot more relaxed.
And did you help, did you try and set something up for yourself to help yourself with the, the, the role in the sense of putting some structure around what you were doing to help you be able to do that role?
Yes, so, uh, the person above me that I used to work under, she used to come out in the morning and write me a list of all the tasks that I had to do that day from priority to not so important. And I just used to work through that list on my own. Um, it was very rare that I would get to the end of that list at the end of the day and, and wouldn't be almost to finishing that list. It's probably only one or two things that needed to be done. Um, you, when you had a lot, a lot bigger jobs than some, um, of course, you know, it took, used to take longer, but I still used to find that there wasn't much left to do for me at the end of the day on that list.
Did you find that structure of having that list helpful for you?
Yes, very helpful. Um, it sort of gave me a direction of where to go, what was most important. And it also gave me a sense of being able to work on my own, because I think I work better on my own. Um, and just being able to do it in my own time and set the course for the day.
And reflecting back now on the diagnosis that you've had, do you think that that's related to that of having that structure and working by yourself?
Yeah, I do, um, it's, I have figured out, since I've got this diagnosis, that I do work better on my own. Um, and I think having, just having that list and being able to be left on my own and, and work through the problems of the job on my own was really good.
Mm-hmm. And we were talking a little bit earlier about that disclosure issue in regards to the scoliosis. In this particular job, did you tell them about your scoliosis and what happened with that?
So I told them about the scoliosis, um. I used to have a chair that I could sit on, um, if I felt that I needed to sit down to do one element of the job. Um, in, in another part, I used to put boxes on a chair. So instead of reaching down to the floor and grabbing things out of the box, the box was on a chair at basically my level, so I just used to reach over. So those were the two main strategies we had in place. And also for sweeping the floor, I also had a little, um, dust and broom set that had a longer handle. So I could use that really well, um. Don't think there was any other strategies that we put in place after that.
You say in your statement that you really wanted to work four days a week?
Yes.
But there was a problem with that, can you tell us what the problem was with that?
Yes, so when you are either on a carer's pension or on DSP from Centrelink, um, you are required to report your earnings every fortnight. And Centrelink take into account your travel time as part of that earnings process. So not only can you only earn so much before your payment is impacted, um, and the more you earn, the more it's impacted. The travel time you spend away from your dependents, if you will, is taken into account as well. So I was working five days a week and then we moved towns. So I was having to drive two hours each day to get to work. So that, that two hours every day actually equaled a day's work and it impacted my payments to where if I didn't scale back one day, I would have been taken off payments.
Mm-hmm. And at this stage, that was in relation to the carer's pension, wasn't it?
It was, yes.
All right. You refer in your statement to something that you witnessed at this job in regards to another lady who had the same condition as you have.
Yes.
That is the scoliosis. Can you describe what happened and what you observed in regards to, uh, this particular lady?
So the workplace that I worked in was very toxic. Um, the manager, uh, obviously wasn't happy that, um, benches and tables needed to be put at a certain height for my coworker and a lot of snide remarks and comments and, um, you know, things were said behind her back. And it seemed that those measures that were put in place for her were more of a hindrance than a help. Um, and if the coworker said that she needed adjustments made, um, it was just, you know, a, a storm in a teacup, a storm in a teacup was made of her situation. So it was a big drama and, you know, it was an inconvenience and she just wasn't treated fairly, in my opinion.
So the coworker, did she actually request that there be some adjustments to benches for her to be able to manage her condition, is that what happened?
Yes.
And that was implemented, but there was a lot of, you, you referred to drama around that?
Yes.
Did that impact you and, and you said earlier in your evidence that you like to be honest and upfront about disability? you like to be honest and upfront about disclosing your condition?
Yes.
When you saw that, did that affect you and what you think you would do in regards to disclosure of your condition?
Yes, it did. I sort of looked at the treatment that this lady was receiving and just basically decided that I wouldn't say anything and just head down bum up, basically, just, you know, keep to myself, keep under the radar and just not disclose anything. When I did disclose that I might be on the spectrum, because at that stage it was a might be, not a definite, I was laughed at in that workplace.
You left that workplace, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
And then you have been able to, you had a break from work for a little period of time, is that right?
Yes, I did. And I chose to look after my children while I was still looking for work.
And one of the aspects of looking for work is, and I think you referred to it earlier, that you look for work that's in school hours, is that right?
Yes.
And in the role that you were able to secure was the school crossing supervisor?
Yes.
As I understand it, you again approached a disability employment agency to assist you with this. Can you just explain what happened with the agency?
In relation to the interview or in relation to preparation?
I'll take it back a step if I can. In regards to, let's break it down. So as I understand, you had a break from work?
Yep.
Then you approached the disability employment agency and you said, I'd like you to help me get work.
Yep.
What they have to do to be able to help you?
So once we identified a task that was suitable for me, we actually started the process of putting together a fresh resume and identifying references and getting references written and verbal from them. And then approaching the organisation and putting in that application on my behalf.
And did the employment agency have to get funding to be able to assist you?
Yes, they did. I found out that Centrelink funds people who are looking for work for two years at a time. When your two years is up, you are automatically exited from the system. And that DES consultant needs to reapply to Centrelink for another block of two-year funding to help you look for work.
So they were able to help you find this particular job of the school crossing supervisor. And then in regards to the application process, you weren't successful on the first occasion.
No.
But you went back to them and asked them for some assistance. So what did they do?
In the interview?
So you weren't successful in the first job and then you went back to them for some coaching, didn't you, in regards to, well, how can I get this job?
Yes. So I went back to my employment consultant and told her the question that had tripped me up in the interview. And she actually got on to her computer, typed in the question and then came back with an answer of what the correct thing to do was. And we were able to move forward through that. So when I went through the interview again, the interviewer tried to trick me with the same question again. And I was able to clarify that that was the trick question, give the right answer and get the position.
When you say trick question, is it that it was phrased differently than the first time? And so you had to sort of try and spot the question that was the trick question?
Yes. So the question the first time around wasn't worded properly and it was designed to trip you up. The second time I went for the same job, it was the same question but reworded again. So it was designed to trip you up again.
But you were able to identify what the question was and you had the right answer?
Yes.
All right. So you were successful in getting that job?
Yes.
You had some training and you talk about the consistency or inconsistency of the training. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
So when I went for the training for the position, it was a week long. You were put with a different supervisor each day for the whole day. And they would run through their way of doing things, also the proper way to do things. But every crossing supervisor had a different way of operating that crossing. And I find, found that incredibly confusing. And I actually came away from that training more muddled than I was when I'd started.
And I think you say, I just had the manual and I read the manual from the beginning to the back.
I would have been better. Yes.
I understand that with your recent diagnosis and your scoliosis, you've now gone on to a disability support pension, that's right?
Correct.
And this job, I understand that the hours has been an effect in regards to your pension with that. Can you just tell me what that's about? I think it had something to do with travel again, is that right?
Yes. So the employer has decided that this year they would give travel money for people who had to travel an extended distance from home. It was so many cents per kilometre. And that added up for me on this particular crossing to be eighty dollars a day, just travel money without my earnings included. So with my earnings included, it was a hundred and forty dollars a day. That created massive problems for me with Centrelink because there was one fortnight where I earned a thousand dollars. At least seven hundred of it was travel money apart from my wage. So that brought my pension down to forty dollars for two weeks instead of almost nine hundred. And they mentioned to me that if I kept getting this travel money, that they would consider cancelling my pension.
And you've tried, you're trying to navigate to change where you're actually doing the job from so that you don't have that travel time, is that right, or travel money?
That's correct.
Can you tell us about recently, you've had some circumstances where you've had some medical advice in regards to your scoliosis? And what has happened with your employment in that regard?
Yes. So I have been advised by a scoliosis specialist in Melbourne that I need to wear a back brace for three years. I did not disclose my disability when I started with this position because I'm legally not obliged to. And also my working, my employment consultant advised me not to in order to get the job. So got the job, have been doing the job for about ten months, no problems. I've missed one day in ten months because I had a migraine and I couldn't obviously concentrate as well, so I took the day off. When I told my supervisor that I needed a back brace, she mentioned to me that I might not be able to keep my job. So she went back to her supervisor to clarify the situation. And she came back to me and said, my supervisor has asked that you get capacity assessments from this scoliosis specialist in the city and until then you cannot work. So they put me off work on that day. It took three and a half weeks to get the capacity assessments back from the specialist. Just before I stopped working, I was offered a part-time position with this employer of going from a casual work basis to a part-time basis on my own crossing instead of travelling everywhere. So when the capacity assessments weren't forthcoming in their time that they would have liked them to, they actually threatened to withdraw the part-time position. After that happened, I was able to contact them and say, look, this is getting pretty dire. I need them now. And they passed them on. I immediately passed them on to my supervisor that day, who then passed them on to her supervisor. The supervisor of my supervisor has came back to me and said, you cannot work until you get a GP assessment, a physio assessment and all your pre-employment checks done again. So they've chosen to ignore this the scoliosis specialist in the city and his recommendation, which was that I was cleared to do the job with little to no hassles at all required to do the job. They've chosen to ignore that advice and make me get GP clearances and extra physio clearances in order to satisfy their capacity. So I actually feel like I'm being discriminated against in my own workplace and also being denied the chance to earn wages because I have a back problem.
And you're working through all of that at the moment, aren't you, to try and get a resolution to that?
Yesterday, I actually approached Victoria Legal Aid and got some legal advice. And I think the lawyers are trying to get on to me today.
Okay. Can we move to a different topic now? And you're obviously going to work through all of that, but I just want to go to the recent diagnoses in relation to the autism, the PTSD, et cetera.
Yep.
We talked earlier that when you reflect back on your life and the jobs that you've had, that there's been a number of instances, for example, the noise and being able to work by yourself, that you can see back now that there's perhaps been some impact upon you in your employment, is that right?
That's correct.
In regards to those recent diagnoses, have you considered strategies about potential future employment as to how you might manage those?
Yes, I've implemented a practice now that I do every week, which is I have one day at home. Just to unwind from the week, regroup and re-center myself to go back to work next week. I also think that the next position I get, whether that be with my current employer or another employer, I'm going to disclose because, again, I don't like lying by omission. And I'm hoping that I can learn some extra strategies that will make work a little bit more possible for me. I definitely think that working by myself is a good strategy to go to as well.
I want to now go to the future and you talk about in your statement that you're concerned about younger people coming through and the less amount of jobs. So people coming through that are younger and more experienced and because you're getting older, that's a concern you have, isn't it?
Yes, it is. I have found in my working history that for me it's hard enough to get a job with my physical and mental disabilities. But as I get older, I'm going to be facing age discrimination pretty heavily. So I feel that my chances of getting a position in the future will be severely limited.
And there's one other issue that you raise in your statement, and that is in regards to the superannuation. And your concern about having a disability and the limitations that's had and the impact that that has had on your superannuation.
Yes, I feel that this issue in particular is a very big issue that not only faces me, but faces people that have a disability when they're trying to find employment because it's okay to have a job and to get superannuation paid. But over time, and especially in my circumstance, when you've had a lot of breaks in between employment opportunities, the fees and charges from the superannuation companies still get charged to you. So it diminishes your super overtime. And I think we don't have that same opportunity to amass a good super amount for when we're older as a result.
Riley, you'll be pleased to know that I've come to the conclusion of the questions that I had. So what I'm going to do now is hand you back to the chair to see if the commissioners have any other questions for you. I'd like to thank you for the effort and the energy you put into helping with your statement and then to give evidence today. So thank you.
No worries. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Riley. I'll now ask each of the commissioners if they have a question. Just to be, so you can be clear where everybody is, Commissioner Galblie is in Melbourne. Commissioner Atkinson is in our Brisbane hearing room. Commissioner Ryan is with me in our Sydney hearing room. I'll first ask Commissioner Galblie if she has a question.
Thank you so much for coming today. It's really terrific to hear your story, very important. I have no question. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes, thank you, Riley, for your evidence. And I agree that pretty much everything's been covered very well. Thank you.
And Commissioner Ryan? Yes, I have no questions. The, your submission is great in its detail. Perhaps one small clarification. You referred to something called the carer's pension. I think you mean the Commonwealth carer payments, don't you? It's a, it's a payment that goes on top of, it's because you're caring for your sons, that's why you get that, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Riley, I just would be grateful if you could help me on what you said about the effect of the travel allowance. It wasn't entirely clear. I take it what happened was that you were given an allowance because you were travelling considerable distances from your home to the place where you were performing your work.
Yes, that's right.
Did you incur travel expenses in order to get from your home to work?
No, just, just the cost of my petrol. That was all.
And running the car too. That would be an expense, wouldn't it?
Well, it is. And that's the reason why they give the travel allowance.
And I think if I remember rightly, the there's a requirement that your car has to be comprehensively insured before you get that payment. Would that be right?
I'm not particularly sure about that. My car is comprehensively insured anyway. So if that's a requirement, it fits that requirement, but that was never discussed with me as a condition.
My question was, or was going to be, whether any allowance was made by Centrelink for the cost that you incurred in travelling from home to work, or whether they simply regarded the amount that was paid to you as a travel allowance as income?
They class it as income and that's why you need to declare it every fortnight.
So you got no allowance from Centrelink for your cost of petrol or anything else in running the car?
No. So those costs were covered by the employer with the travel allowance that they give you, which is included with your wages every fortnight. There was nothing from Centrelink. They actually decrease the amount of your payment in relation to how much earnings you have and how much travel earnings you get. So I don't know if you remember me saying that one fortnight I earned a thousand dollars.
I remember that.
Yes, and seven hundred of that was travel allowance. However, my pension went from nine hundred dollars almost to forty dollars as a result for the fortnight.
Yes, it reduces by fifty cents in the dollar after a certain amount.
Yes.
Riley, thank you very much for coming to give evidence so clearly and for the statement that you have made, which we all have and which we have read. We're grateful to you for coming to the commission and assisting us in that way. Thank you.
No worries. I'd just like to thank the commission for the opportunity to speak and to tell my story on behalf of the thousands of us that can't or haven't got the know-how of where to go to speak in commissions like this. I think it's really important for people to have their say and I'm grateful that you've allowed me to do that today.
Thank you very much, Riley. We appreciate that. Thank you. Ms Eastman?
Commissioners, the next witness joining us is John Baxter. So we just may need to wait a little moment until Riley finishes and we can zoom Mr Baxter in.
Good afternoon, Mr Baxter. I think we can see you on screen. Can you hear us? We can't hear you. Try again.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Good, good afternoon. We can hear you now. Thank you very much. And thank you for coming to the commission to give evidence. I'll ask Ms Eastman perhaps to introduce you and then we'll get the oath or affirmation.
So commissioners, you'll see, we're joined by John Baxter, who's coming to us from Victoria today. So first need to deal with the oaths and affirmations.
Mr Baxter, if you would be so kind as to listen to the instructions given by my associate who was with me in Sydney, and she will administer the oath. that was with me in Sydney, uh and she will administer the oaths to you. Thank you.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr Baxter. Um, I'll explain just where everybody is in case that you're not clear about it. Uh, Commissioner Galbely, who is on the screen, I hope in front of you is in Melbourne. Commissioner Atkinson, I hope also on the screen, is in our Brisbane hearing room. And Commissioner Atkinson helpfully waved. In the Sydney hearing room with me is Commissioner Ryan. And I'm, of course, in the Sydney hearing room, and so is Ms Eastman. So that's where we all are, and you're in Victoria, right?
In Melbourne, yes, sir.
In Melbourne, yes. Thank you, Mr Baxter. I'll now ask Ms Eastman to ask you some questions.
So let's um deal with some formalities. Can I confirm that you are John Baxter?
Yes, I'm John Charles Baxter.
And you prepared a statement for the Royal Commission dated for December this year?
I did.
You've got a copy of the statement with you?
I do.
And what you said in the statement's true. Is that right?
Correct. It's true, yes.
Now, commissioners, a copy of the statement can be found in your tender bundle, part A, behind tab fourteen. And could you receive the statement into evidence and mark it exhibit nine point twenty-one?
Yes, that can be done.
Now, Mr Baxter, you have done advocacy work for the First Peoples Disability Network for over fifteen years, and you are a passionate advocate for reconciliation and cross-cultural understanding. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And you've been a councillor with Reconciliation Victoria for a number of years?
Yes, I have.
And you are a founding member of the Aboriginal Disability Network of Victoria?
That's correct.
And your advocacy work has taken you to places such as representing the First Peoples Disability Network at the United Nations in Geneva. You made and you and you made a presentation to the UN in New York.
That's correct, yes. Very um felt very privileged that um um, well, one, being a person with disability, but also being an Aboriginal person. And it's given me the opportunity to be able to not only see sometimes the disadvantage that these persons may face, but be able to hopefully be a voice for the community as well. And working with organisations like the First Peoples Disability Network. Um, we've been over to, um, or as an example, one of them was over to uh New York in the United States with the launch of a um a art exhibition, a photographic art exhibition called uh um uh Unfinished Business. And I was able to speak at a forum there at the Museum of Tolerance.
Yep. Now, uh, when I start with your current role, because you tell the Royal Commission in your statement that when you think about your current job, you just pinch yourself. Because you went for so many years trying to find meaningful employment, but even still, after four years in this job, you pinch yourself. And your job is the Aboriginal Partnership Coordinator for the Brotherhood of St Lawrence. Is that right?
That's right.
What do you do in this job?
It's the Brotherhood of Lawrence, the NDIS. The Brotherhood of Lawrence itself has um many different avenues that they work with helping support members of the community. But this specifically is with the National Disability Insurance Scheme. And myself being an Aboriginal person with disability, um, we help support initially other Aboriginal employees um at the Brotherhood. We help participants who are looking to um start a plan with the NDIS. We work with other offices as well to make sure that we have culturally safe spaces. And we work with other organisations as well in partnership uh to ensure that the service that we provide is consistent across the board.
And in in your job over the last four years, you've got to see a lot about the experience of people with disability finding work and keeping their jobs. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we find that um one of the things we endeavour to encourage people to do by assisting them uh through the NDIS and providing them with um either aids and equipment, might be a wheelchair or walking cane, something of that nature, or um service provision, having a uh a professional come and assist that individual uh with their mobility and getting around. Um, is their independence and their self-determination. We sort of find if people, they could truly take control of their own lives, then make good positive decisions and choices for themselves, then that builds their confidence. And then they are more likely to be able to get out of the community and do meaningful, um whether it be voluntary work or community activities or paid employment.
Okay. Now, we're we're going to talk a little bit about the key messages that have come from your experience and the barriers to finding employment. But we thought that we might start with telling the Royal Commission a little bit about your own journey in life and your experience of finding jobs and the different types of work that you've done. So can we start at the the beginning?
Yes.
Uh, well, you, well, after you were born,
Yes.
you had to have some surgery in the hospital.
That's correct.
Yeah, when you left the hospital, instead of going back home to your own family, you were taken to a children's home.
Yes, yes. I was born in a tiny town of a place called Robbenvale, which is up near Mildura, in the far left-hand top corner of Victoria. And uh at roughly three weeks old, was um transported down to the uh the Royal Children's Hospital. Um, well, I spent approximately two years, realize this is in nineteen sixty and nineteen sixty-one, um with corrective surgeries, physiotherapy, um getting some splints made, et cetera, et cetera. Um, getting fitted with a wheelchair. I was probably too young for a wheelchair at that age. Um, but uh when that course of medical treatment had finished, instead of returning me back to um my parents, who were still living up in um Robbenvale, um I was sent to a initially a baby's home and then um eventually being fostered out to a non-Aboriginal um family uh in the eastern suburbs.
And uh you you say you grew up in a happy home and you say you're grateful for that. But it was in your teenage years that you learnt more about your birth family. And when you were seventeen, you met your father, your sisters and some extended family. Now, you you've been quite modest in describing this in your statement as an extraordinary moment that had a profound impact on you. Mr Baxter, what was that like when you met that your father, your sisters and an extended family?
Well, I think in the time leading up to that, um I had these preconceived ideas and the the model parents that you would like to have. And, you know, we're wondering how many siblings, et cetera, et cetera. Um. And um, look, I recall the day as if it occurred yesterday. And it was a bleak weekend, um and we stayed in a motel in another town. Uh, there's not much accommodation in Robbenvale. And we walked into this um this house packed to the rafters of people. Um, to all were strangers to me, but were all relatives and all very much family. And it was just one of those extraordinary circumstances in life. And you realise that you are a part of a far larger picture. You know, the people look quite similar to what you did. Um, and I suppose just a couple of the take homes I had from that was um not only had I been wondering, did I have a family and how many brothers and sisters, et cetera? But a lot of other people knew of my existence, but didn't know what had happened. Because the um uh child services in those days weren't very forthcoming is um informing parents and families of what had happened to children that were removed. Um, you know, their wellbeing, welfare. And, um, you know, sadly, I'll look, you know, you go through the the information, you know, many, many years later. You know, you read the letters written by your parents inquiring to how I am, um to which there is either no reply or just a first reply saying, well, you know, um, I was too young at the time, or I didn't feel the, it was the right time to respond to that. And, you know, if you could ask in a couple of years' time, et cetera, et cetera. And um you're kind of realising it was a tremendously heartbreaking experience for my parents and for my family, who are far more aware of that situation. But it also became a a real um thing in my life that uh I've really had to put into a safe space. And you realise that because you can't go back and change the past, um, and what has happened is happened, um, you somehow have to just deal with it. I know it doesn't really sound like much of an answer, but um you've got to own the situation, but let make sure that the situation doesn't own you.
And and it's it's one of these moments, wasn't it? That that sense of identity, both as a First Nations man, but also as a person of disability, bringing those together. That's what created that profound impact. Is that right?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And um it's kind of realising um straight off the bat, um the areas of familiarity and commonality within our family, even though we had never met. I I'm I'm still quite surprised, with no offence to my sister, just how alike I am to her. Um, which is a bit of a funny old statement if you had had the chance to meet her. Um, but we seem very much alike. And um I don't know whether it's something in the the gene pool or um we're just lucky, I suppose. But um, yeah, it's it's a it's a very interesting circumstance. And it took quite a while for us to get used to and to know each other. Um, because initially, we didn't really have any common points of interest. Um, and we had to learn what they were and sort of build up on that. And I think the point that I had a um a person with a disability, I really weren't quite sure what to take of that either. But uh being the family they were and being the community they were, those are the thought, well, whatever. Um, if you need to help, you'll ask for it, or um if you get stuck, um, we'll see what happens, yes.
A very strong theme that comes through your statement, and I'm going to take you back to when you were at school, is this sense for you of connection to family and community. And uh that sense of connection and importance to you starts when you're at school. And you went to a special school for primary school and a mainstream all-boys school for high school. A part of the challenge in high school was no focus on integration or access. So I want to ask you about high school and that sense of belonging and connection. What was the big challenge for you at high school?
Oh, my goodness. Um, it's funny, my first response was just getting through the day. Um, in uh in my primary schooling, going to a special school that was a school of persons with disability, you were just one of the crowd and there wasn't anything different uh about you. Um, with high school, uh, yes, guess two, an all-boys school at that point was a a sort of very interesting, you know, boys can be rather bullish and um and fairly tough and 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 what. Uh, and to just to add to that um charm, uh, part of the building was a three-storey building with no elevators. We didn't have any um teachers' aides or no support i- in that way. And I think the the staff that were there at the time really had any training or teaching or what on um what do we do with this individual? Um, you made friends as you go along, but uh, uh, you know, unfortunately, I've um experienced quite a significant amount of bullying uh throughout my high school years. And, you know, people would um, um, you know, take the books and whatever that um uh remember had to replace the um school bag uh multiple, multiple times. Uh, they had great fun and, you know, taking that and and um throwing it away or whatever they did. Um, and it caused me a great deal of anxiety, um, because I generally wanted to succeed. Um, I I found school was quite interesting and it did have the opportunity, you know, to build on a on a on a broader social basis. Um, and I suppose it was my first taste of the, if I can call this such, the the real world. Um, but everything comes with a price. And I thought, well, if I'm going to make it in general, um, then I've 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 got to, I've got to stand up to these challenges. And I've got to do the very best I can. And, um, you know, with the support of the foster family that I had and a couple of mates that that I went to school with. Um, and look, I had tutors that helped us out with um my education, but that, you know, it was a tremendous challenge, being able to try and keep up, um, to be able to recall and um be able to, you know, get the assignments in, uh, you know, and um it was just a really tough time, uh, uh, genuinely a very tough time.
And uh when you reflect back on school, you you now uh ask yourself, well, what was the impact of of your experience in school in your attitude and your thoughts about work? And when you left school, you went straight into a four-year printing and graphic arts apprenticeship. And you thought it was good because it gave you a steady wage and guaranteed employment for four years. But what happened after, a few weeks after you finished the apprenticeship? What happened next?
It was about three weeks after the um, uh, I finished the apprenticeship and got my certificate. Um, I got my notice uh saying that your services were no longer needed. Uh, and that, to be honest, came as quite a shock. I sort of thought that I was operating at, at least at the the same capacity as other employees um in that endeavour. Um, the work wasn't overly challenging or anything like that. Um, we were making, I don't know if you recall them, the old Mills and Boom romance novels.
Thankfully, I recall those.
From many, many, that was one of the things we did. Um, funny the things you remember. And, yeah, it look, it really did come as quite a shock. And I thought, well, obviously, we've got to expand to try and find meaningful employment. Um, you know, you've had a taste of that now and you most definitely wanted um to live a as independent life as you possibly could. But I suppose the reality of the situation as a person with disability, you know, and what positions were I physically capable of doing, um, always crept up. You'd be reading the the wanted ads or be going to interviews or writing out uh CVs, et cetera. And um you kind of realised that quite quickly that uh for all the hard work and um, you know, rewording the statements, um, once, if it was a face-to-face interview, um, you got to that point that often you, uh, you know, continuously kept falling short.
So uh you you found it very hard to get another job after that apprenticeship ended. And at that time, there weren't disability support agencies around or anyone really to assist you to find new employment. So it meant for you looking at the classifieds in the newspaper and applying for jobs. And and uh it got to a point, didn't it, that you just ended up doing a lot of voluntary work in your twenties and your thirties? So where you were not able to get actual paying jobs, you still wanted to be doing something and you went, okay, I'm going to do some voluntary work. And so you did things like some interesting work, didn't you? You helped out with the P A and the audio visual systems at your church. But you taught religious education for twenty-three years
Yeah.
at a local primary school. That's a pretty long stint.
Yes, I met, I met an amazing individual, a gentleman who was older than I. And he said that he'd been doing the same task for about twenty years. And I set a goal for myself to be able to try and match that achievement. And look, I I I feel truly, truly honoured to be meeting some amazing people along life's journey that have really lifted me up and encouraged me and supported me and given me amazing advice um along the way, you know, not just to give up and, you know, just um end up sitting in front of a television and just relying, you know, solely on a disability support pension. But, you know, you're you're worth far, far more than that. And, um, you know, if you continue to keep um And um, you know, if you continue to keep um, striving to achieve your goal, then, you know, at some point you will achieve those goals.
Yeah, I think twenty-three years of teaching religious education in a primary school. Gave you this sort of wish to want to go into teaching, but you didn't have those qualifications. But you say that it improved your social skills and it really gave you this knack for being a very good public speaker. And that's really then led on to the advocacy work that you're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, there's some other uh, work opportunities that you had and we've agreed that we're not going to name any of the past employers. So both you and I have got to be sort of careful around this.
Tiptoe around, yes.
Alright, so you had a job in the nineteen nineties with uh, what we'll describe as a government business enterprise. And this is a job that you got by applying to an ad in the classifieds.
Yeah.
And it's a job that you had for about five or six years.
Five or six years, yes.
And it, and in a sense, would you say it was a little bit of a dead-end job? Because you, you were never offered the opportunity to progress or advance in that role. Is that right?
No, everybody who um, starts off employment within that agency, starts off in a tier-one level, if you like. And um, depending on, I guess, your own desires on where you want to go within the agency, the, the organisation. You can do additional training, you can move from one office to another, uh, and you can learn new skills as you go. And that's what I endeavoured to start doing. Um, and you have, you know, yearly reviews, assessments. And at one point within those reviews, um, the focus was more based on what I could not do. As opposed to what I could do and what I had achieved um, to that point with that, with, with this employer.
And uh, and that employment didn't end well, did it?
It did not. Now, we sort of got to a point where they really weren't quite sure what to do with it. Um, I guess I just thought I was admitted um, uh, superfluous to their needs. Uh, even though I transferred to about three or four uh, different locations. And so they ended up doing a, um, what I would refer to as an illegal transfer from one department into another. Um, and I initially thought that would have provided greater um, learning opportunities, et cetera. But uh, very soon realised that uh, that actually wasn't the case. That we're just um, looking for somewhere to um. Uh, locate, locate me, uh, where I um, um. Hopefully wouldn't be too much bother to them and just be out of the way.
Now, one of the other jobs that you had for a number of years is working as a taxi driver. I assume that's a taxi driver in Melbourne, is that right?
Yes, I.
What was life as a taxi driver like?
I really enjoyed that job. Um, a, a good friend of mine um, encouraged me to apply for the position. And initially I thought, oh no, there's no way I could do that, you know, um, it's a lot of hard work, it's tremendously long hours. Um, you know, you might have me carrying somebody's groceries back to the car or they're getting their bags in and out if they're going to the airport, et cetera. But I, I fell into that position um, quite nicely. I love driving. I finding, um, I got my driver's licence when I turned eighteen. You realise that gave us a tremendous amount of independence and freedom, um, which are, which I, I, I just. Still to this day, just absolutely love. And um, yeah, we should have found that you were able to um. Build up a, a course of clients over a, a period of time and do what we refer to as the school run. Uh, where you'd go to a school at three-thirty, pick up a group of students and just deliver them off to their various homes. And that was, if you knew those jobs in advance, uh, it actually made the job fairly, fairly easy. Um. Um, of course, there's long times sitting there doing nothing as well, but I think um, you know, probably all taxi drivers have experienced that.
Right, so I'm going to move to the next topic that we wanted to talk about, which is the barriers to employment. And the commissioners have your statement. So commissioners, this starts at paragraph thirty-five. And we're going to run through some of the key barriers that Mr Baxter has seen over his time. For employment of people with disabilities, but particularly people from Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities. So Mr Baxter, the first one that you've identified is the advertisement of jobs and recruitment. Why is this one of the key barriers that you've identified?
Oh, there's a number of reasons for that. One can be that um, sometimes. A position is advertised just within the general classifications and so an Aboriginal or a non-Araboriginal person can apply for the position. There is a provision where you can have a specific role that is um, tailor-made for. A um, uh, an Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander person. But um, in most of the roles that um, we're dealing with. Um, it's, it's open to um, to uh, anyone um, who feels that they can, they're qualified for that position. And that includes people who know a great deal about Aboriginal culture, for example. Or have been working with people with disability for a very long time. Now, they don't actually have to be a person with disability. Or they don't have to be Aboriginal, which I find is a, a very interesting, uh, a very interesting concept. And within that, um, I think that um, a lot of Aboriginal community persons, um. Especially those from more remote areas, really struggle within their educational. Situation. And actually, I was just listening to a report, I think it was just yesterday, that um, seemed to um. To, to, to state that as well. Um, and therefore, if you don't have the qualifications, um, the same as uh, peers. Then um, you know, on a selection, when you're uh, up there to try and get a position. Uh, often you're knocked back seemingly because you don't have the, uh, enough qualifications. And sometimes enough experience as well to be able to fulfil that role.
The next, next one is the access and modification. And I think you say you still find some office buildings very difficult to access. And I want to ask you about what you say about when it comes to modifications. Based both on your personal and professional experiences, you feel as though the onus is very much on the person with disability. To approach their supervisors to make requests. And then there's this tension because. Sometimes you need to be more disabled to get the modifications, but you also need to be less disabled so you can try to fit in. Can you just explain to the Royal Commission now that are, that tension of being more or less. Around modifications and access?
Yes, look, sometimes it could almost appear to be a bit of a curse to be, you know, too mobile and too agile in what you do. And also have the concern of, oh, I better not speak up, I better not say anything. And so some people tend to struggle through. Um, various scenarios um, in silence, which is um, which is concerning for myself. And you think, you need the avenue to be able to speak up. Um, I look, I know within my own employment situation. Um, I've uh, one of the uh, supervisors that uh, I connect with quite a fair bit. Uh, he knows me quite well now. Uh, and um, if there's an issue that has concerned myself. In relation to my disability and my capacity to work, for example, the amount of time I would need to take off. Um, if I'm need to getting uh, either some form of treatment or getting um, uh, calipers that I wear. Uh, getting them fixed or repaired, uh, things of that nature that, um, I'm always careful and conscious of. Um, because we are all designated a certain amount of sick leave per year, try and not cut into then taking annual leave off. To try and get these things that are necessary for me to fulfil that role at work. Um, and so therefore I can, the same as anyone else within my um, my work, be able to fulfil the job duties. Uh, parking is one I think I may have mentioned as well. Uh, in a number of the offices, um, there is very little in the way of. Um, good on-street parking, especially in the winters down here in Melbourne anyway. Um, sometimes we had to park some distance away from an office. We actually have an office that is uh, actually quite hard to access. And it just isn't, it's, it's just an additional layer of difficulty uh, for someone like myself. You're going to sort of picture in your mind, you know, trying to um, hold an umbrella or wrapped up in a, in a, in a, in an awkward raincoat. Uh, and trying to get down the street, um, you know, in the heavy rain. It's um, it's, it, 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 it does cause quite a little bit of difficulty. And um, being able to have these discussions with an employer and to be able to try and um. Say be stationed at an office that has good um, parking access, that has good disability um, bathroom facilities. For example, um, that has um, uh, a workstation that is easily accessible. Uh, you know, it makes a, an immense amount of difference, um, because then you're not focusing, you know, on. Oh, when's the next time I need to use the bathroom? Or, you know, um, you know, can I reach the um. The cutlery and the, the plates if I want to have um, uh, my lunch break? Or, you know, am I eating it out of a paper bag? Um, you know, things of that nature. And um, you know, you want to, you want to. Connect with your other colleagues at work, you want to be able to just um, work as a peer. And um, I sort of feel at the moment that uh, I, the office I work at is, is a good office. That it uh, it, it, it uh, surrounds a car park, uh, which is very handy. Uh, and it has good facilities in it, which I can, which I access on a, on a daily basis.
And that, that very much links into your next point, which is employer attitudes. And you've told the Royal Commission that one of the key issues is employer attitudes and acceptance of the individual. And that has an impact from the very start of a person looking for work in an organisation. So from a First Nations perspective, what are the issues with employer attitudes for First Nations person with disability?
I think for a lot of, which I understand, for a lot of organisations, um. To then specifically be employing Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander persons for a specific role. So then those individuals can be reaching out into the community is probably a little bit left of um. Of, of, of centre. And maybe it's a space that some employers haven't entered into um, so far in their, in their. Uh, within their, 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 their work. Um, our, the, the company I work for at the moment. Has a reconciliation action plan. And I feel very fortunate, I've been able to um, participate within that process. And provide some um, advisement and, and um, recommendations to how that should be uh, formulated. And we're looking at a variety of different things, um, from things like sorry leave. Uh, that if you have somebody passing in your community, um, and how is that placed? But as with um, within the employer and the amount of time that potentially he could take off. And also doing celebration, doing um, events and dates that are important, that members of the Aboriginal community. Um, like uh, NADOC Week, which we have just uh, celebrated. It is covert year in uh, early uh, December. And, you know, are we permitted to, are we, and it's more than are we permitted to go and um, participate in various events. But is the employer themselves willing to embrace those activities, those events? Uh, and those celebrations, uh, which I'm very pleased to say our employer has. We, we did an online um, forum and uh, meeting. We brought some elders in and they shared their reflections of um. The early days of NADOC. And it really brings this to a, a different level of understanding. Um, you know, often, um, you know, within the advocacy work I do, you know, you see, oh, you know, have you ever met an Aboriginal person? You know, and I get the story of uh, when I was in the Northern Territory, when I was up in Darwin. You know, and sometimes these stories are, you know, aren't terribly positive. Um, and I said, well, you're talking to an Aboriginal person now. And often they said, it's, oh, wow, um, that's kind of neat. And you sort of share a little of your own story and um, you know, why it's important to have this um, you know, this, this role of reconciliation. Where you realise, you know, there are many different um, uh, community groups that can work together. Um, you know, we shouldn't be sort of isolating individuals and looking them as something of different. Um, or, you know, just because we may not know a great deal about, you know, what that community group has to offer.
Right. The last one you've got in the statement is training and support. And that's a, a big issue in terms of. The right type of training and support, but also the impact on families who live outside major cities. What um, eh, what are your observations about training and support and what could be done better?
I think that it's an ongoing process to. In carry, well, it's two ways. One is encourage people to apply for positions, um, because they do have experience. You know, I find a lot of Aboriginal peoples have experience working within their own communities. But they just don't count it up as experience, you know, working on a voluntary basis. Uh, but the other is with employees as well, say, well, if this individual may not have the qualifications. Uh, of somebody who lives in a, in a, in a major city region, what we, can we do to be able to support them? Um, you know, either within the, the way that a position is advertised, where it is advertised. Um, can we offer a traineeship, uh, and apprenticeship? Um, have mentoring available. Even during the, this course of working with my current employer. I've done with the Australian Indigenous Leadership Council, I think it's Council. Um, I've done um, some leadership and training courses, uh, to just help assist myself. In becoming a better employee and having a better, well, hopefully, better leadership skills. And, you know, the encouragement and also the allowing people to then have the time to be able to do those courses. I think is really, really important.
And lead, leadership and role models is an area that you've identified as also important. But you, your message to the Royal Commission in terms of recommendations is. The focus should not just be on helping people get employment, but you really want to emphasise that it's helping people keep. Their employment, because by the time they've lost their job, it's too late. And so you've said that to the Royal Commission as one of the key areas of recommendations. Before I ask the commissioners if they've got any questions of you, are there anything, any other matters that you wanted to tell the Royal Commission? In terms of your recommendations or suggestions for change?
I don't, I don't think so. I think that, well, what I, I'm very grateful and, and that I'm able to present here this morning. So I'd like to thank the Commission for allowing me to, 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 to speak. Um. I sort of feel, and I've probably just my upbringing, um. The family that I, I grew up with, um. They're very, very um, half, you know, the glass is always half-full. And always looking at the positive aspects of things. And, you know, even though you might get a lot of knockdowns. Then, you know, it's not how many times you get knocked down that matters, it's how many times you get up that's important. And I think, well, I hope that um, within my advocacy work and even to the Commission, that you say, well. If we can be an encouragement to others, that there um, there are a lot of success stories out there. That there sometimes just need to be heard. Um, I think that is really, really important. Um, and, you know, I suppose whether you are a person with a disability, whether you are an Aboriginal or a Torres Strait Islander. Or whether you're in this unique position where you are both an Aboriginal person with a disability. That um, you know, we, we all have many talents and many, many, many things that we know. That we might even not realise that um, have just been gifted to us over time. And being able to turn that around into something meaningful, but something that not only supports yourself. But supports the rest of the community as well, is just such a tremendous tool to have. And I feel very privileged to be able to do so.
Mr Baxter, thank you for your very wise words and sharing uh, your life journey and story with us. Commissioners?
Thank you very much, Mr Baxter. I'm going to ask, first of all, Commissioner Galbally, who's also in Melbourne, if she has any question for you.
Well, first of all, thank you so much, you know, for that. It was really um, very, you know, really. Great to hear it. And just a little thing, with the um, reconciliation action plan at the Brotherhood. Do they, I, I assume they also have a disability action plan? do they, I, I assume they also have a disability action plan? Um, or maybe, you know?
Am I?
I don't want to embarrass you.
I, I don't know. I'm sure they have got good, solid policy there, because they do employ quite a number of persons with disability, which is very, very encouraging. I'm sorry, I just don't know.
Well, anyway, you, you, you made the point that it's the double whammy of the two coming together. And it's really good to hear that there's a very positive employment. I just wanted to also clarify, right back at the beginning of your story, when you were removed after hospital, um, was that into a children's home for children with disabilities or a general?
No, it was um, it was a general, uh, it's not there anymore. Um, it's um, it was just a, a children's home in the eastern suburbs. But in that era, um, where I currently live, which is in the same general area, was almost the outskirts of Melbourne. Um, and uh, I've heard it said that uh, you know, these facilities were generally put on the outskirts of towns and whatever. Um, you know, they probably to draw less attention to themselves, I would guess. Um, but yes, that was a baby's home, uh, that I was, I was in, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll ask Commissioner Atkinson in our Brisbane hearing room if she has any question.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to say, Mr Baxter, as an ally of the First Nations brothers and sisters at the Commission, I wanted to thank you for your, what I might call deadly evidence. Thank you.
Thank you so kindly. That's very nice to hear.
I'll ask Commissioner Ryan if he has any question.
Well, I just, God said no, I don't have any questions. But thank you, Mr Baxter, for your evidence and, uh, and telling us your life story.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, I, I, I do have a question. Um, you indicated that you taught for twenty odd years religious education at a primary school and that you really had aspirations at that time to be a teacher, but you didn't have the qualifications. I'm wondering whether anybody ever suggested to you during that period that you could get the tertiary qualifications that you needed to become a teacher? And if they did, what obstacles there were to pursuing that path?
No, sir, that um, no, I, I, I also may have thought that um, sort of going through, you know, challenging times and getting a, you know, a, a deal of rejection from, you know, various employment opportunities, that you thought maybe that um, maybe you'd reached the, the peak of the capacity as far as that went. And uh, you thought, well, I could just do this little job here and um, it was, yeah, I look, yeah, I don't know. It was uh, it was a fun thing to do. Um, the school that we connected with was, were tremendously supportive, which I was very grateful for. Um, and it's a whole program that was uh, alive in those days. It's uh, it's uh, no longer being um, uh, being taught down here in Melbourne anyway, so, well. But I suppose it was just a, uh, an opportunity that I had and um, um, it, it kept me occupied, it kept me motivated, um, which was great. Um, and I suppose it then encouraged me to, to go out and to uh, to try a, a variety of different opportunities, um, whether it be on a voluntary basis, uh, socially, um, or um, you know, within an employment structure. And um, I suppose at the end of the day, when you look back at all of this, you're grateful for the opportunities that you have. Uh, if, if, sometimes you learn some very cheap lessons, sometimes the hard ways. But um, um, just for myself, um, you know, I'm very pleased that uh, within the, the position I have at the moment, that uh, uh, is, is a good, strong, meaningful job, and it's got a lot of opportunity for it. And it allows me um, uh, to be able to communicate with um, the, the, uh, the Aboriginal community and far beyond that. So, yeah, I um, I sort of really feel I've, I've, I've achieved a great deal in, in the time I've had.
Would you certainly have, but just one more question, is the Brotherhood still in Fitzroy?
It is, sir, yes, yes.
I think it might have changed from the nineteen seventies, when I used to visit there from time to time. There weren't so many cars around, I think, in the nineteen.
Yeah, well, Rundrick Street's a pretty busy street these days.
Yeah, they even had their own football club, but that's another story.
I, I, we had a discussion about whether AFL would make its way into Mr Baxter's evidence and I'm doing well till right at this point.
No, that was a, that wasn't a reference to the AFL, that was a reference to the AFL, which as Mr Baxter knows, is a very different concept.
That's right.
Thank you very much indeed for giving your evidence. I join with my colleagues in thanking you for your evidence and for sharing your experiences with us. And we wish you continued success and fulfillment in the role that you have found. That we have benefited enormously from your evidence. Thank you so much, Mr Baxter.
Thank you very, very kindly. Thank you.
So Commissioners, that takes us to the lunch break. And if we can return at two thirty Sydney time, one thirty Brisbane time.
Yes, we'll adjourn until then. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Yes, Ms Eastman.
Uh, thank you Commissioners. Our next witness is Susan Colbert AM. And she's joining us in the hearing room here in Sydney. So we'll first deal with oaths and affirmations.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms Colbert, for coming to give evidence today at the Royal Commission. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, who is very close to you, in fact, but one point five metres away. Uh, if uh, you would follow her instructions to take the affirmation, please.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Ms, uh, it is Colbert, is it?
That's right.
Not Colbert?
Either is fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms Eastman will now ask you some questions.
Now, before we do this, uh, there's a disclosure that we wanted to make. And that is that uh, your organisation is currently offering two paid internships at this Royal Commission through your organisation's stepping into programme. And that your organisation has also provided the disability confident workforce training to the Royal Commission. So I'll just make those disclosures at the outcome. Now, can I confirm that you're Susan Colbert?
Correct.
And you are the CEO of Australian Network on Disability?
That's right.
And you've made a statement for the Royal Commission. You've got a copy with you?
I have.
And uh, are there any changes or amendments to the statement at all?
No changes or amendments.
And what you've said in the statement is true?
That's correct.
Commissioners, could you receive into evidence a copy of the statement and mark it exhibit nine point twenty-two?
Yes, thank you, that can be done.
And there are a number of additional documents that accompany the statement. And we'll go to those in due course if we need to. But if you could mark them nine point twenty-two point one through to nine point twenty-two point eight.
Yes, thank you, that also can be done.
All right, now, let's get started. You have been the CEO of AND, if I can use the abbreviation, for twenty years.
Correct.
And you've just announced your retirement.
I have.
Is that right? And so uh, I'm going to ask you lots of questions that really pick your brains about what you have learnt over the twenty years of the work that you do. But let's start at the beginning. So what is AND and why did you found it?
So this new network on disability is a business disability network, founded to help employers understand more about the barriers and the way that they can be more welcoming to people with disability. So generally, businesses don't have a good understanding of the uh, the needs and requirements of people with disability. And twenty years ago, they weren't even particularly insightful to the needs of their customers with disability. My experience after ten years of assisting people with disability into employment was that without system change, helping individuals into job was a bit like selling tickets to a plane that was never going to take off. And we needed to actually encourage employers to open their doors and to get a better understanding of the skills and talents of people with disability, so that uh, people with disability could take their rightful place uh, in employment and also ensure that they were treated well as customers.
And the constitution of AND sets out the principal purpose. And you've repeated that in paragraph thirteen of the statement. So what is the principal purpose of AND?
So a principal purpose is uh, facilitating uh, internships, promoting employment of people with disability, encouraging good corporate citizenship, taking employers along the, the journey uh, to build disability confidence so that they can be inclusive and accessible to people with disability.
And in terms of the organisation itself, uh, is it just you or is there a staff? Do you have a board?
So we are a, a company limited by guarantee. We have a board of thirteen um, uh, people. Uh, we have twenty-three.
Can I ask you to pause? Uh, so I've just got a message to say we need to do some technical adjustments. So let's, let's do that. Now, do we need to do a little test to see if that's working? All right, so I was asking you about your corporate structure. So company limited by guarantee and you have a board.
Yes, so we have thirteen people on board. We have twenty-three employees located in Melbourne, Canberra and Sydney. And um, a diverse range of roles involved in the organisation.
And are there any people with disability on the board or employed by AND?
Yes, we have three people on our board who have uh, disability. And we have uh, around seven people with disability on our team who have disability.
Now, I want to ask you about, when you say you're a business network and you're working with employers, without identifying any particular organisation or entity, can you give us a bit of a sense about the employers that you work with? Public, private sector, not-for-profit? Do they have to be over a hundred employees? Are they small business? Can we get a sense of the nature of the employ, employers that you work with?
Yes, uh, we work with employers from uh, the private sector and the public sector and, and not-for-profit. Not-for-profit is a smaller percentage, uh, with most of our members being from the public and private sectors. The kind of industries that we work with in the private sector are banking and, and finance. Um, um, yeah, a whole, a whole range, uh, um, property and business services, uh, legal services, health and community, uh, insurance, um, a, a range of, really quite across the board, including some mining companies.
And uh, do those employers come to you? Or have you gone out to the employers to gently persuade them to join the network? How does that, how does it work?
Initially, we spent a lot of time knocking on doors and encouraging employers to join. But in all fairness, over the last two or three years, I think bolstered by the NDIS, more employers have demonstrated an interest in making progress on the uh, employment of people with disability.
And so if an employer, be it either public sector, private sector, corporation or sole trader, says, uh, we're interested in understanding more about AND, how do we become a member? What do employers have to do?
So I would say that we are mostly set up to work with large organisations who have a, a HR and, or a corporate social responsibility or a corporate affairs infrastructure. For small business, they can really decide to just employ a person with disability. They don't need my advice or the advice of our organisation, they can just decide. For large organisations, the more complicated their systems and processes, the more difficult it is uh, to, uh, for organizations to open their door. We have to help large organisations create an authorising environment. And that means,
What does that mean?
It means a clear message from the top, from the chief executive, that we, that as an organisation, we want to um, be accessible and inclusive to people with disability as employers and customers. If, if the leadership at the top does not say that, then you would have to consider the organisation to be passive. And so given, if the organisation is passive, then middle managers are less likely to take a risk uh, when they're going for a recruitment process or less likely to know how to uh, support a, a customer with complex needs. And um, and really no progress is made. So having senior leadership make a commitment for the organisation is critically important. Beyond making a commitment, which of course we help them to do, there are then some practical things that help an organisation to accommodate different ways of doing things. And so we help them learn those different ways of doing things. As an example, if a deaf person applies for a job and they uh, fill in their online job application and they don't want to put in their mobile phone number, because they don't want somebody ringing them, well, then they can't upload their application. So they're immediately excluded, they've not even been able to apply for the job. And so we help organisations understand those small things that can make an enormous difference to whether somebody can even initially apply for a job, let alone be considered.
Can I come, come back to the leadership issue? So if it has to be that top-down approach and you need that commitment at the high leadership level, do you apply any sort of test before somebody could be, an organisation can become a, a member to just ascertain or satisfy for yourself that, yes, this is an organisation that's got the commitment at that high leadership level?
Um, no, we ask them a series of questions, why they want to join, what are they hoping to uh, achieve? Sometimes um, we agree that we're not the right organisation for them. Um, but my view has always been to, let's bring them into the tent. Uh, so um, expose them to the, the leaders from other organisations and other influencing dialogue and conversation and written materials that are more likely to bring them um, along the, the process. So there is a series of qualifying questions about their intention, what they're hoping to achieve, because we don't want to have a list of passive organisations. Um, and we do check on that. We certainly make sure uh, that our, our members are utilising um, the, the opportunities that come from being, being a member. So we, we monitor that. Uh, I, I have certainly, people will tell you, called them and said, why haven't you done anything? You haven't made much progress. Um, what, what's happening for you? Um, so um, we, we, we do not, we do not encourage, we do not support a, a passive approach to membership. It's not about collecting the money.
You mentioned that uh, you have large companies as members. Obs, the top fifty ASX companies, how many members?
So we only have twenty-three um, in the top one hundred of the uh, ASX companies. Um, so I would say that um, multinationals that are influenced by um, their US headquarters are more likely, uh, to participate. So Australia has not been quite so um, so, uh, so regulatory or advocacy focused on employment of people with disability. Uh, but US headquartered uh, companies um, have often made substantial progress.
Do you have any of the four big banks?
Yes, our four big banks have all made excellent um, progress with, and um, primarily, uh, partly because they have a big customer base and accessibility of their banking products is very important from a customer uh, base as well.
Do you encourage members to develop a disability um, action plan?
We do, and we measure that annually when our members do um, our Access and Inclusion Index. Um, they um, will, they voluntarily report on ten areas of their business and commitment is one of those areas.
I think Dr Gauntlet from the Australian Human Rights Commission will tell us tomorrow that only seven of the top fifty ASX companies have disability action plans.
Yes.
Why?
My experience is that B to C, business to customer organisations are more likely to create a disability action plan. There is very little uh, forums or discussion. There is very little forums or discussion points. Where, where would, where would a CEO from a top one hundred ASX be stimulated or to, to consider a disability action plan? Who would do that? Whose role is that? Even the Australian Institute of Company Directors does not play a leadership role in promoting businesses to be inclusive of people with disability. Is it the Business Council? No. I mean, who were you hoping that encouragement would come from?
You're asking me?
Yeah, I mean, I'm asking the community. So from a community perspective, who do we expect to do that encouragement of the one, top one hundred ASX? Is it the ASX themselves? Well, they don't in fact have a disability action plan.
I would have thought the public relations departments would be a good start.
In terms of the membership of A and D, there's at the present time, three hundred and eight organisations who are members. And if you look at the combined workforce of the three hundred and eight, you estimate that to cover about 1.7 million Australians.
That's correct.
Now, I might come back to the issues of action plans and measures when we get into the detail of what you understand to be the barriers.
Yeah.
And for your evidence, we're going to take a different approach. We've heard this week from people with experience of seeking jobs and retaining jobs, of their sense of what the barriers might be. And we've asked academics, but I'm interested to ask you from working with employers, what some of the employers say. But before we do that, I want to ask you about some of the programmes and services that A and D is involved in. So one is the stepping into internship. And I mentioned that in the context of that connection that you have with this Royal Commission. What is the stepping into programme all about?
So one of the best predictors of ongoing employment is work experience during the time of study. The stepping into programme was developed after we had lots of calls from law students with disability who feared that they were never going to get an opportunity. So we asked law firms to come together and to design a programme where law students with disability could be given a fair chance to demonstrate their skills and capabilities. And so the first programme was stepping into, into law. And we set that up entirely separately from a summer clerkship so that there was no competition or comparison as a pilot programme.
Can I just point you there? Why is that? Because, and again, for the lawyers following, we often think now that a summer clerkship is a little bit of a rite of passage. It's your opportunity as a law student to see what life might be like in a large law firm, a medium-sized law firm, in-house or in government. And so summer clerkships can be important. Why separate out the opportunity for law students with disability from the regular summer clerkship programme?
When we looked at the data, firms received about twelve hundred applications for around fifty summer clerkships. So in that situation, what the firm does is take the fastest route to get from twelve hundred applications to who they're going to interview. And the method for doing that will be often if a student has missed the semester, perhaps there's been a grades aren't in the top two or three percent, et cetera. And so all of those students are excluded based on, on the data. And so a better way would be to develop a more purposeful approach so that those students were not automatically excluded. And by developing the stepping into programme as a winter programme, over time, we found once that those firms learnt about the benefits and capabilities of law students with disability, they then could do things differently. But we needed to find a way to introduce that talent to firms that they wouldn't have otherwise met. And that's the point of the internship programme, is that employers meet skilled and talented university students with disability that they would not have otherwise met if they took their digital or mechanical traditional recruitment and selection processes.
And so what happens now? Has it changed since two thousand and five?
Yes, so it is not run as a winter clerkship or a winter internship now for law firms at all because the learning process has changed. And there's, there's a range of models. But what some organisations will do is put aside two or three roles for university students with disability. If they're going to take on thirty summer clerkships, they'll then say, well, let's put aside 10% of those for students with disability, but still exclude from the mechanical process. Because there's often a very good reason why a university student with disability, academic transcripts looks different and a very good reason why they might not have done extracurricular activity, haven't had gap year and travelled overseas. And so it's a way of giving the university student with disability a chance to be interviewed and to compete for a role.
But under the current system, such a student with disability forms part of the general intake.
That's right.
So about fifteen.
Ms Colbert, can I ask you something? This is from my own interest point of view. Have you thought of doing the same with courts? Because one of the routes for new graduates, law graduates, is to become an associate for a year and then go to the bar. Indeed, amongst our council assisting, we have people who follow that route. Have you thought of approaching courts or bar associations with a similar proposal?
We haven't approached bar associations. One of the, the important aspects is, is what we would call a demand-led programme. We don't have a supply of, we don't have a talent pool of people. It is entirely market-driven. So if the bar association, and that is the appeal for, for students, because they are genuine roles. And the probability of winning one of those roles is, is higher than, than putting your hat into a ring of a very broad pool of talent. So it is demand-led and we're happy to support any organisation to, to support the programme and be only more happy to have further conversation, follow up on that.
Thank you.
So about fifteen hundred students with disability have completed internships and these have all been paid internships, is that right? Now, how successful is this programme? Have you got any data on whether the programme translates into sustainable employment for young people?
Yes. So we find that, you know, if you look at, if we make a comparison based on graduate outcomes, so which measures employment four months after graduation, eighty percent of students who've done stepping into internship are employed four months after graduation. And so this is in many disciplines, not just, not just law. A higher number of successful interns are working full-time in comparison to university students who haven't done an internship. And of those who are working part-time, a higher percentage are working part-time because of the choice, because they choose to work part-time. Also, for the students who've undertaken an internship, less of them are in casual work. So we have looked at that over several cohorts. We've just actually won, been awarded for the, by the Zero Project, looking at excellence in employment programmes. It's a global award. So the programme has been well recognised. We do measure outcomes. We also ask every student after their internship for feedback and we ask every supervisor for feedback. When this summer, for example, we have one hundred and eighty-seven internships available from our members, we had seven hundred university students with disability apply. We interview every single one of those university students with disability. Of course, they're not all going to be successful based on the numbers game. But we do absolutely encourage them to participate in our PACE mentoring programme. And what we've seen before is that students.
The next one I want to ask you about is PACE mentoring. So I'm happy to go into, we can go into PACE mentoring now.
So the point I want to make here is about people need different steps in the journey. And so if we've had situations where a student wasn't successful at winning an internship, they then went into PACE mentoring, had mentoring support from, from one of our employers, then reapplied for the internship and then were successful based on the additional coaching and mentoring support that they've had and then been able to transfer into graduate programmes. So people need more steps in the journey sometimes and that's what we aim to do.
So the PACE mentoring is the positive action towards career engagement.
That's right.
That's where the pace comes from. It's a mentoring programme. Before I ask you about that, the Royal Commission has heard yesterday about, and I've mentioned this to you, these practices called creaming, churning and parking. How do you reconcile the internship programme with those concepts of creaming? The suggestion was that you take the best or the most ready applicant with disability and find a place for that person. Has that been an issue that you've had to look at in the context of the stepping into programme?
I think if I can recall, one of our successful interns, he was a man who had, had not quite finished a master's in accounting. But he was also a man on the autism spectrum with cerebral palsy, who had a speech impairment and a hearing impairment. So if it's creaming based on his ability, because his capacity to do that, that work and he was a good fit for that job, yes, you know, maybe he had the best academic transcript. But if it's creaming in relation to disability, I would say, I would say no. Because there's nothing wrong with recruiting skilled and talented people. But I would, I would hate to think that our programme demonstrated over time a, a higher placement rate according to the impact of disability.
How do you define disability for the purposes of that programme?
We absolutely define it in accordance with the University Disability Support Officer guidelines. So we, if the university has deemed that the student is receiving support through their disability programme, that is adequate for us. We do not, we don't pass on details to our members of the student's disability either. That's an issue between the student and the member. We do pass on information about workplace adjustment requirements. So we don't ask for medical support. But if the student is getting support through the disability support unit of the university, that's adequate for us.
Do all universities apply the same criteria for that purpose?
I don't feel equipped to answer that, but you would certainly hope so. We deal with forty-two universities. I haven't looked at the data.
And the fifteen hundred students referred to in paragraph twenty-four of your statement, I take it they are all university students?
That's right, because the, the point of the programme is to have paid work experience prior to graduating because that's what helps them become more competitive on graduation.
As Eastman referred to the possibility of creaming, we may be talking about the same thing. I would imagine there's a risk that a student with disability would elect to go through the programme new run because there's a better chance of that student getting into the intern programme than if the student went into the general intake of whatever the industry or company was. Is there not a risk that what's happening is that some students who would, with disability, who would get in through the ordinary programme, in fact, they're getting in through your programme?
And I guess it's a comfort level for the student to be able to share that information. So when they come through our programme, they are sharing information that they do have disability. So I, I would think that a number of students who don't want to give that information to an employer would still go through the, through, compete on, through the main door, particularly if they think their academic transcript would help them compete. So it really should be the personal choice of the individual, whether they want to share that, that information.
Thank you. Can I just ask a question about how this is financed? It's common to provide some sort of incentive to the employer to take their job. As I understand, too, that you've mentioned in the statement that the pay received by interns is below what a graduate might otherwise receive in a company, but above a certain minimum that you strike. Additionally to that, they're employed by you, not by the company. So I presume that makes it easier for the employer that when it comes to an end, they don't have to make a difficult decision to keep the person on. Is there any other incentive other than those?
Actually, only a very small percentage come through our payroll. Maybe, maybe ten or fifteen percent come through our payroll. And no, the employers pay for us to coordinate the programme. So they pay for $3,900 for us to attract and interview and shorten this student. And then they don't pay graduate wages because the student isn't yet a graduate. But they do pay in accordance with, with who that, generally, you know, as they were to clerkship, et cetera. So absolutely same salary. Where we do make it easier from an administrative perspective, particularly with some government agencies because the onboarding payroll for, for what might be a four-week placement might take them from, from efficiency and strictness. We want to have the student on-boarded before they have to go back to university. And so sometimes if that process is very slow, it's easier for us to support that administrative.
You're different from DESs. There, you know, there's no government-funded financial incentive for the employer.
It's entirely funded by the employers. And so there is absolutely no financial incentive whatsoever. In fact, they're investing in, in, in the, in the student because they see valuable type of pipeline talent for them.
So I'm conscious of the time and I really want to get into the barriers. But can you tell us something briefly about the PACE mentoring programme and how that works and its success? And also the Connect Fifty Programme, which has been somewhat disrupted because of COVID-19 in terms of reaching out to some of the, the regional areas.
Yeah. So the PACE mentoring programme, also funded by employers, where we ask our members to mentor either an unemployed person with disability or a university student. The purpose of that is for joint learning. So the mentor will learn about the lived experience of the job seeker or student with disability, understand the perspective and the challenges and hopefully impart wisdom about career directions, networking, how to find a job, assist with resumes, et cetera. And around thirty-three percent of people in the last group of mentors who applied for a job during, while they were being mentored, were successfully found a job. The purpose is unemployment. It really is coaching and mentoring and building that, that network. And this year, we took the programme digital to respond to COVID-19. So it is very much about senior people leaders in our members volunteering to learn that perspective and to impart their wisdom to people who are entering the workforce or are looking to continue their work, whether they be a student or an unemployed job seeker. So that's really the purpose of that, that programme and Connect Fifty. So Connect Fifty, once again, was quite a data-driven programme. Victoria in particular had some regional skill shortages. In four locations, they had good universities. And we noticed that the students who were seeking internships in those universities generally had to go to Melbourne or go to a capital city. We saw the linkage between what if those, those students could stay in their local region? We um saw the linkage between what if those those students could stay in their local region. And our goal was to connect employers in that region with grad um with students who would be graduating in that region. So that uh we could have more people from regional Victoria staying with their family and support network. Not feeling like they have to move to a capital city for work and making that connection. Uh but yes, COVID has gotten in the in the way of that um that program in particular.
Oh, uh when uh I made some opening remarks to tell the commissioners what to expect during this hearing. I made reference to the Deloitte Access Economic Report. And A and D commissioned that report back in twenty eleven.
Yeah.
And that reveals that there is an economic benefit to Australia. In increasing the opportunities for employment for people with disability. What brought about you commissioning that report?
So we have always tried to um uh harness the influencing power. And the um uh the insights from executive leaders. And I've uh been supporting a champions group of um a senior public servants in in Canberra. And um they felt that there would be some real benefit from having a strong business case for Australia. Uh for to increase employment participation and that more data was required. So we uh we got sponsorship from the Business Council and uh and Westpac. Uh it it's more effective to um bring people together, to work together. Uh to to create that argument and we um asked Deloitte Access Academic. Deloitte Access Economics to create that report for us because it was a piece of work that had not really been done. And it was a way of looking at the the enormous cost, not only to individuals with disability. Who are excluded from the workforce as a result of their disability, but the cost to us as a as a country and as a community. Um from having poor, you know, um poor progress and um and poor employment participation.
And that report made a number of recommendations and said, if we assume over the next decade to twenty twenty one, which is just around the corner. These might be the results. So those recommendations were never implemented.
No.
But you still have a view that the recommendations arising from the Deloitte Access Economic Report. Still remain relevant today, is that right?
I do. And in fact, um as as far back as twenty years ago, similar recommendations were uh were made. About how we can increase employment participation for people with disability. And so it's been a a long acknowledged. Um challenge and I think there are some uh tangible solutions. But we would need to choose to act.
And that report also identified barriers to employment experienced by people with disabilities. And you've got a list of them in paragraph forty one. And if we reflect back that this is nine years ago. Some might say um very little has changed and the barriers that you identify in that paragraph are. Still ongoing barriers, is that right?
That's correct.
Right. So I want to get into the barriers because in addition to the findings of Deloitte Access Economics. We asked you in coming to the Royal Commission to identify the barriers that you have seen. From the young people with disability who you work with and people generally. And employers to say, what are the barriers and why? So can I take you to uh some of your work in what is called the Disability Confidence Surveys? And those are surveys directed to business.
Yeah.
And to try to get a sense from business as to a little bit like the temperature. What are their concerns? What is the level of confidence, particularly around a confidence for a business to take on new employees? So your confidence surveys, this is paragraph fifty fifty two. Have been undertaken in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And it covers five hundred small to medium businesses.
Yeah.
And you've asked them about their attitude towards employees and customers with disability. Now, I I'm interested in when you say this, is the confidence surveys highlight that despite positive community attitudes in Australia. There still seems to be a significant knowledge gap and a great deal of ignorance when it comes to including people with disability at work. So pausing there.
Hmm.
Um I just want to understand when you say a positive community attitude in Australia. Because and I'll ask you this because we've heard during the course of the week that one of the barriers is the attitude of employers. And I'm interested in whether you're talking about a sort of big picture community attitude. Or an attitude at a very sort of grass levels, individual by individual basis.
So I think from a from a big picture, um firstly, when you we ask about attitudes. Um it's pretty easy for people to, you know, fake good and say that they have a a positive attitude. That can be done uh fairly um easily. So I don't think added measuring attitudes really gets to the heart. It's not like measuring behaviour. Hmm. And so there's that so that comes into uh into play. Um certainly. But in, so even if there is a positive attitude, the ignorance is vast. So most employers um don't think that they have work that is relevant and suitable. For uh people with disability.
Why?
Um because they can't imagine it. Um they can't imagine um uh how how a a a blind person. I could make a a great lawyer. Um they they can't imagine.
One, I have one sitting behind me.
Um they they can't really uh imagine how a a deaf person could be excellent at customer service.
Why why is that? Is it just outright bias? Is it unconscious bias? Is it? What what is it?
People, you know, people are very focused on themselves. Um and and the things that they most care about. Um so people are focused on themselves, their passions and their fears. And so if you're running a business, um the the fear button will be about cost and 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 risk. So you may have a a a positive attitude towards people with disability in your community. But you may also believe that government and charities are looking after people with disability.
So sort of a bit of not not in my, I I'm all for it, but not in my backyard, but government charities have got that field covered.
That's right.
Do you think now also, well, NDIS has got that covered. Do you see that there's a perception in the community? That if someone has disability, that's now the NDIS, that's not for us as private sector employers. Do you get that sense at all?
Um that may very well be the case that um that the narrative could be, well. Those people are being looked after now by the uh NDIS. And that's why it's really important that we change that that conversation. And um and focus on that we're all in it together. Uh it's it's our country. Um everyone should have the chance to to work and we should have a view of leaving no one behind.
The employer mobilization project, you speak about that in your statement as well. What does that project, um what does that project sought to do? And then I'm going to ask you about some very specific findings out of that project.
It really, um one of the things that 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 project did was to segment employers. Uh this has been, uh this segmentation has been done uh before in various forms, but maybe not so much in the detail here. And so what they found uh was in this segmenting that, you know, weighted. Only four percent of employers really had the capability and the flexibility to um. Routinely and systematically be inclusive of people with with disability. Four percent.
Is that because there's no incentive or that there's no sanction in terms of employers. Opening up to employing people with disability?
There are not neither incentive or sanctions.
All right, let's have a look at some of the barriers that employers identified emerging from that project. And Commissioner, this is paragraph fifty six of the statements. And just in the time that we've got. Sadly, we won't be able to get through all of them because there's many, but let's focus on a few. Uh one is physical um physical issues and environmental constraints. And so it's the rough or extreme work size, the lack of adaptive technology, not having a lift. Or wheelchair accessible bathrooms and this be a limitation. Now, I might say to you, have we not had disability standards for premises for a number of years? Why is this still a barrier?
Well, well firstly, this is a a bit of an erroneous belief because only five percent of um of people with disability use wheelchairs. Um and so it's an employer making an assumption that when we're talking about people with disability, we're talking about people who use wheelchair. Well, actually ninety five percent of people do not work, use wheelchair. Um. And so this is comes back to the the fear and holding stereotypes that are completely outdated. And come from a place of of a lack of understanding.
What about these red tape hurdles? So the difficulties complying with worksite requirements that don't allow or make it difficult to provide flexibility. Modifications or adjustments.
Hmm. I think that's a complete furphy. Um but for one of a a not, it's just once again, lack of understanding. Um and employers are required to have safe work practices. Safe work sites for everybody. And some of their uh employees who don't have disability uh today. Uh may acquire a temporary disability or a pertinent disability in the future. So a safe working environment is the right of everybody. And it's just the uh assumptions that are uh deeply held. That we've um not really been able to get cut through on on key messaging.
So this links in with the area of risk management is that the risk of hiring a person with a disability. And that that might create a risk of injury in the workplace. But let me try to put a perspective from the employer. The employer might say, we have very stringent. Strict liability requirements under work work health and safety laws in this country, and there's no margin for error. And so if we have to comply with our legal obligations for work health and safety, why shouldn't we be able to take these risks into account?
Hmm. Well, of course, you absolutely can. But if you looked at the data, you would say you would know that people with disability. Have less workplace accidents and injuries than other uh employees. And are more likely to be compliant uh with work health and safety procedures. But once again, you know, ten tons of fact um outweighs one ounce of perception.
Fear of the unknown, and you touched on this, coming back to when I asked you the question why, you said. People are concerned about themselves and fear. The fact that it's described as fear of the unknown. Seems to suggest a lack of knowledge about people with disability. And the employers have said in responses, we don't know how to act.
Hmm.
And we don't know how to accommodate mental health or disability in the workplace. And then saying the recruitment of people with disability is a bigger hurdle than retaining people with disability. But if you can never get in the door in the first place, it probably doesn't matter that it's easier to retain. So where where do you think this fear of the unknown comes from?
I think what it really speaks to is the need for an employer to have a trusted advisor. Um so that when they're presented with situations, they feel that they have a trusted advisor that they can ask questions of. Um and not be embarrassed and not feel at risk of asking those questions.
Well, you your organization does disability confident training. So what you go into organizations and say. It's okay to ask somebody questions or this is how you might want to phrase particular questions or talk about issues. So how do you overcome the fear of the unknown with just a trusted advice? And is that enough?
I I think by providing um some useful questions that help people to feel safe. Some practical questions that help people feel uh informed and safe and educated. Obviously, in that disability confidence training, we aim to give a perspective, a different perspective. Than the stereotypes that people walk around with in their heads every day as well. Because um those stereotypes are often outdated, irrelevant. Um and might come from a very small uh e- experience. So uh perspective is important, education, equipping with sensible questions. Recognizing that um there will be some areas of concern. And focusing on those and moving past those are are all valuable activities.
And this tendency to see the disability rather than the person, and that probably links with what you've described. Here is extremism, which is the tendency of employers to think of the most extreme examples. So where things could go wrong and then use that as a reason not to employ people with disability. Where where do these um notions come from?
Once again, entirely based on uh on fear and un- unrealistic uh fear. But people also have a very um grave concerns about how they are seen. By their uh by their colleagues um and by uh and certainly by the the people that they re- report to. And um I think I've mentioned previously, I remember having a conversation where. I um a a senior person said to me, this could be a career limiting move if we get this wrong. And so through that process, I learned that um the the important role is to. Uh really help the employer understand um the reality aspect of their risk. And the perception aspect of uh risk and fear and to help position inclusion of people with disability. As a good thing to do, uh rather than to be something that's been to be a payoff.
At at an organizational level, thinking about the organizations that you've worked with. What are the barriers in the structures of the way in which organizations approach recruitment? And retention of employees that ha- create the barriers for people with disability?
Well, the more we automate, uh the more barriers that we often uh create uh for people, uh people with disability. Um I mentioned before about if you can't upload a job application because you don't put in your mobile phone number. Uh but the um automated systems and potentially um AI in the future, of course. Will exclude many more uh many more people. So apart from uh the automation in the recruitment and selection process. It can start before that in terms of the way that we describe jobs by not being clear about the inherent requirements of the role. Makes it very hard for people with disability to know whether they could actually perform that that role. Um and then it can be a inequitable recruitment and selection process. So if you didn't, if you need Auslan. And you didn't have a chance to ask for an Auslan interpreter and you are invited for an interview, well, then you get turfed out at that point. Um if you um need an uh accessible interview room and you're not provided that, once again, you you lose. So we really need to help employers ask questions to make it easy for candidates to say what they need to be included. In the process. And then from the onboarding processes, you know, there are still government departments where. Uh new employees can't use the HR system because it hasn't been designed or or purchased with um people with. Um low vision um in mind. Uh so there are hurdles at many, many points of the process. And particularly as it becomes more automated.
So why isn't a law like the Disability Discrimination Act? Which uh covers discrimination in employment, both in the areas of recruitment, terms and conditions of employment. And the definitions we know of disability discrimination are treating people less favourably. Compared to a person without the disability in the same circumstances. Or also this area of discrimination called indirect discrimination. And requiring everybody to comply with the same practice or policy. Why aren't the discrimination laws doing more work in these areas?
Hmm.
Do you have a view about that?
Well, discrimination law, it's very passive. Um and um my experience of. Um knowing many enthusiastic uh candidates. Looking for employment who have disability. Is that always asking for things to be done differently, always um knowing that things haven't been designed. With you in mind. Always knowing that things haven't been designed with you in mind and then ultimately being rejected is absolutely corrosive and is emotionally wearing and exhausting and tiring.
So you put the Disability Discrimination Act on top of that and say, if all of that's happened to you, you as the person with disability have now got to be the person who brings forward a complaint.
That's right.
And bear the cost, the time and the emotional resources to pursue a complaint. So that seems that the obligation's on the person with disability to be the one to have to say to an employer, hey, you haven't made the accommodations that I needed.
That's right.
How, how effective then is a complaint system that puts the onus on the victim of discrimination to have to carry that through? How effective is that?
Not, not effective. And, and that's why we've seen no, we've had no learning. You know, where, where are the cases that, that are, that have helped employers along for the last twenty, more than twenty-five years of the DVA, learn how, what steps that they need to take to be more accessible and inclusive to people with disability? Where are those, where are those cases? Where is the learning? Every time we walk into the Human Rights Commission, we're asked to sign a confidentiality agreement. So as the person making the complaint, so that actually no one's ever going to learn from any conciliated complaint. No one's ever going to learn because it's all behind closed doors. And, and you know, I, I wrote in two thousand and eight to the government to say, please consider that when an issue is of public interest, that it should be raised as a matter of public interest and it should be, and the Human Rights Commissioner should be given the power to say, let's, let's bring this one out in the open so that we can all learn from it.
We might ask the Commissioner tomorrow those questions. I want to finish on a positive note if possible, notwithstanding you've said for twenty years, these intractable problems have remained. What could be done? And you do give us some ideas about a way forward in paragraph fifty-seven.
Yeah.
What would you like to tell the Royal Commission about the measures that you've identified? And I can see that I'm very close to time.
Okay.
The Commissioners can read paragraph fifty-seven, but in your view, what, what is the sort of key factor that made the difference?
So we really have to put people with disability and employers at the heart of the employment support system. We spend almost four billion dollars a year on employment support system that is about a transaction that has nothing to do with the satisfaction and the, the goals of people with disability or, or employers. So that, that investment in co-design is critically important. We also need to focus on long-term evidence-based programs. And to understand, you know, if I just kind of make this point, we cannot solve long-term problems with short-term thinking. And so investing in a one-year, you know, ILC grant or something like that, a one-year something is not going to be a ripple in this massive ocean. And that importance for evidence-based programs, et cetera. We do have a fantastic program called the National Disability Recruitment Coordinator and Job Access. It is Australia's best kept secret. And so we really need to pass that information on. We need some innovation and to invest in more than one program so that people with disability have much more choice over their career destiny with, with absolute support without kind of rigorous milestones. And yeah, look, you know, I could go on. From a practical perspective, we could look at government's role as a, as a purchaser, as a policymaker and a, and a program owner and an employer. As a government across our three levels of government, their, their purchasing, their procurement power could leverage like we do for women and like we do for Indigenous Australians. Why aren't we leveraging our supply chain? They do it in Victoria very successfully and we, we really need to be leveraging the supply chain. We should not be paying billions of dollars to recruiters who are not disability confident recruiters. We should be, you know, drawing a line and say, if this recruitment company that we spend billions with each year cannot accommodate the needs of job seekers with disability, why are we investing? We've got to be really following the money here and influencing the supply chain and influencing all the key players to come together because we're, you know, we're in this together. And, you know, we need to commit to long-term thinking and long-term solutions beyond a one-year or a three-year ILC grant.
I feel like we've only just touched the surface, but thank you so much for sharing your insights over the twenty years that you've been at the front line of some of these concerns. So thank you very much. The Commissioners may have some questions?
Yes, we, I'm sure the Commissioners do, but we may have to ration the time in order to ensure that we can fit in what we have to do for the rest of the day, but I'll start with Commissioner Galbally. Do you have any questions? Commissioner Galbally is in Melbourne.
Yes, thank you very much for that evidence. I'd like to ask about your paragraph, your final paragraph, I think fifty-eight, on improving accountability. Where you say, unlike the education standards and transport standards and building standards, there's no standards set or accountability in this area. And I presume that would also encompass the topic of targets and holding organisations to account, especially in the public sector. I wonder if you could speak about that, please?
Yes, thank you. So there have been previous working parties looking at whether we did in fact need employment standards. That, that was probably around the period of two thousand and, maybe two thousand and six or so. Um, and of course, I, I remind you that I work for an employer organisation, but if you ask employers to come around the table and talk about whether they would like more regulation, then I think you can probably guess the, the answer. But beyond standards, we don't even have guidelines. Um, and so, you know, before we get to the, the question of standards, should we be giving employers guidelines? We do not have a guideline for employers on how to make workplace adjustments. So I feel that we're in a unique position in Australia with Western Australia, Victoria, New South Wales, Queensland and the Australian Public Service currently all having targets for the employment of people with disability. I fear that they won't meet those targets. But if we were to help those, those jurisdictions and if we were to work together with those jurisdictions to develop those guidelines and then help private sector organisations with those guidelines, well, even that would be a breakthrough before we get to, to regulations. But we have so little, the investment has been so poor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkinson?
Uh, no, that's, uh, thank you very much for your evidence. It's been most enlightening and encouraging. Thank you.
And Commissioner Raw. Within seconds of you starting speaking, you mentioned something, you said that American-based companies seem to be more attuned to this than Australian ones. What do you think might be the reason for that? Could it be the Americans with Disabilities Act nineteen ninety or what, what makes the difference?
Hmm, I wouldn't want Australia to emulate the view that America has towards its American with Disabilities Act. However, when they passed section five oh eight for government procurement more than twenty years ago, that did rather move the market. Um, and so influencing through supply chain. In fact, during the Obama administration, suppliers to, to federal government were asked that seven percent of new hires be people with disability and, and that they would report and comply with that. That was very, very successful and that led to over a hundred thousand new people recruited, both in the Obama administration and the flow, and more than that in the, in the, in the supply chain. So in fact, the, uh, the, the US has a higher proportion of, of people with disability in its employment. Uh, and, and the UK is doing fairly well as well. So we've had quite a hands-off approach and, and we're paying the price for that.
The only other thing I wanted to ask you to respond to or highlight. Um, paragraph forty-three E of your submission refers to there being no enterprise-wide approach to facilitate the large-scale employment of people with disability in Australia. I'm guessing you referred to the fact that most of the DES programmes, for example, are targeted at smaller enterprises. Aren't the Qantas's and the public sector, you know, so are they not able to access them?
That's right. So the tragedy here is that actually the Department of Social and Services has competitors in the market, which are the Department, Prime Minister and Cabinet and the Department of Jobs and, uh, et cetera. And so the other, so Prime Minister and Cabinet and, and Jobs go to employer, employers and will offer an enterprise approach to disadvantaged job seekers. And so, uh, so in the, in the Indigenous program in particular, a, a company will say, we will recruit three hundred or, you know, three hundred people, Indigenous Australians over the next two or three years. And government then will grant, I don't know, sixteen million dollars or something to help that the, the company build their capability to put in all the supports that are required to assist in any system changes, et cetera. And generally invest in supporting the company to make what is, what is in fact a social change, a cultural change, a business change. But not for people with disability.
Thank you, Mrs. J. Thank you for your evidence.
Yes, thank you very much. I think from your recent comments, we perhaps have to be a bit careful about drawing lessons from the United States. Their experience is so different. They are so affected by race in that country and the concept of quotas and the disputes about the extent to which there should be preference given to certain groups within the community and the retreat from the Civil Rights Act and so on and so forth. All make the United States comparisons to be very dubious indeed, not to mention the astonishingly low wages that they pay people that fortunately, whatever our inequalities, we haven't quite reached that point. Uh, but may I endorse what has been said by my colleagues, it's been very interesting and most stimulating. Thank you very much for your evidence.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you again. And Commissioners, we're going to have a very short adjournment to reconstitute the hearing room here in Sydney.
How long do we need?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes. Very well. We shall resume at three fifty Sydney time, two fifty Brisbane.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
Hey, let's do the banging.
The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Our final witnesses for this afternoon include Associate Professor Jennifer Smith Mary, who joins us on the screen, and Professor Buchanan, who is here with us in the hearing room. And we're, we're going to make a panel work, notwithstanding that our witnesses are in different locations. So we first probably need to do author affirmations.
Thank you. And thank you, Professor Buchanan. Thank you, Professor Smith Mary for joining the Commission and being prepared to give evidence in the panel, which we hope will work effectively today. Uh, would, would you please, if you don't mind, follow the instructions of my, of my associate, who is in the Sydney hearing room to take in Professor Buchanan's case the oath and in Professor Smith Mary's case, the oath as well. Thank you.
I will read you both the oath. At the end, please both say yes, or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Miss Eastman will now orchestrate the panel.
I'll start with Associate Professor Smith Mary. So can I confirm that you are Jennifer Smith Mary?
Yes.
And you are the Director of the Centre of Disability Research and Policy and the Head of Discipline, Behavioural and Social Sciences in Health at the University of Sydney.
That's correct.
And you hold a Bachelor of Arts with Honours, a Graduate Certificate in Applied Law, a Graduate Certificate in Education Studies, Higher Education and a PhD in Social Policy.
That's correct.
Now, Professor Buchanan, so you are John Buchanan?
Yes.
And you are a member of the Business Information Systems discipline in the Business School at the University of Sydney.
Yes.
And you hold a Bachelor of Arts with Honours, a Bachelor of Laws, a Graduate Diploma in Economics and a PhD in Work and Organisational Studies.
Yes.
Now, you have both provided us with a joint outline of evidence in relation to the matters that we're going to talk about this afternoon. I give the qualification in the time available. We'll do our best to cover as much as possible and the research you've undertaken is truly fascinating. So I hope that we can do justice to that. Um, and can I start perhaps this way? Is you have undertaken a project for the New South Wales Department of Industries? And can I ask you, Associate Professor Smith Mary, to tell us what is this project? And why did you become engaged in this project?
Um, so we were engaged, we were contacted by the New South Wales Government, the, the then Department of Industry. The project subsequently moved to the Department of Education in order to look at disadvantage, the way that students with disadvantage experienced vocational education and training in New South Wales, particularly within the context of SMART and SKILLD, which is a training package that the New South Wales Government administers. And we, we focused on disability as a case study of disadvantage. Um, and the New South Wales Government, in terms of their interest in disability, they'd observed a lot of churning of people through qualifications. So people doing a large number of qualifications, but they're not ending up in employment. And the aim of vocational education and training from the government's perspective is in, in order to improve employment outcomes. And for that reason, they subsidise the involvement of people with disability and other forms of disadvantage in SMART and SKILLD, so they can do fee-free courses, for example.
Right. And I'm going to ask you about some of those component parts in a moment. But the result of this research was the publication in August this year of a report called Disadvantage Disability and Vocational Education and Training, a research report, which the Commissioners have as part of the tender bundle, and I'll come to the tenders shortly. Uh, what I wanted to ask both of you is to tell us a little bit about your findings. But before we get to the findings, can we start with an overview of the project and the methodology that you used? Professor Buchanan, do you want to take that question?
Sure. Um, yeah, we, we, we put together a team that had expertise in both the labour market, vocational education and deep expertise in the domain of disability. So I and my colleagues were strong on the labour market and vocational education. And Jen and her team were strong on disability. We thought it was important in answering the questions posed by the department to do policy research, statistical analysis, particularly descriptive statistics, and then do a qualitative set of studies to bring the rich processes to life. So because I've worked in the public service for seven years, as has my colleague who worked on this. And we from the start always recognise that policy is a domain itself that needs to be studied. It's not just something that falls off at the end once you've done your empirical analysis. And so we had a deep engagement with how policy in this domain had evolved. And that's, that was written up by my colleague Bruce Smith. I, we were very lucky and you don't see this very We were very lucky, and you don't see this very often, the department basically threw open all their administrative information systems. So they were giving us raw data on how people with disability engage with the vocational education system. Maybe I don't get out enough, but you know, this was one of the most exciting parts of the project because you could actually get down to particular courses in particular institutions and see who was doing what. So in that sense, the department was incredibly generous and took a lot of risks because I usually don't expose that level of detail. And then having got the stats sort, and can I also say on the statistical side, they gave us a completely open sky to bring in whatever stats we liked. And so, as you will see from the report, we didn't just look at people with disability in the stats. We actually said you had to anchor this analysis in a broader labour market understanding of the evolution of work and in particular, the evolution of labour demand and the nature of segmentation on the supply side of the labour market. And then, having done that work, Jen and her team did the qualitative work. I worked with and assisted them, but I was very much a support person. That was Jen's side of it. And we, as a matter of research design, thought it was important to look at two contrasting local labour markets. So we looked at Western Sydney and the local labour market around Bathurst and Lithgow. And so, I mean, I can go on and on and on, but that's the guts of it. Policy research, stats broadly defined and with rich depth from their administrative systems, and then two local labour market studies looking at the dynamics of workforce development within them.
Right. Now, this might sound an obvious question, to which we should all know the answer. But when you're talking about vocational education and training, what are we talking about? Just TAFE, for example, or was it a broader concept?
Now, that's a really good question. The way I define it is vocational education and training is the space within the education system that sits between schools and universities. And it's the space in the labour market that sits between entry-level jobs and professional work, which is a very big loosely-defined space. And how that space is configured varies dramatically around the world. Whereas most countries around the world have universities and they have schools and they're kind of identifiable, the actual form vocational education takes varies radically in countries around the world.
So this is not disability-specific? This is really open in the true sense of the word?
Yeah.
And what you were seeking to do, and I think Associate Professor Smith Mary, can I call, can I use Jen?
Yes.
It's late in the afternoon, so I'll do economy of words. But when you have said at the beginning about disadvantage and particularly disability, again, can I just be clear about when you talk about disadvantage? What are you referring to?
Well, see, that's where the policy-
Either of you can jump in on this.
See, this is where we took the policy research very seriously because, and that's, I think, one of the richest part. I mean, the report's very rich, we're very proud of it. But we actually spent quite some time getting across the history of how these categories had emerged. And when, if, to cut a long story short, vocational education throughout most of its history in Australia has basically been an extension of the apprenticeship system. You know, it came out of a kind of the emergence of the trades and the underpinning knowledge for the trades.
But that takes us back to sort of old notions of blue collar, white collar distinctions.
Absolutely. But with the Kangen Report, which came out of the Whitlam Government, there was a vision that we needed, Australia needed to offer something to people who didn't go to university and who left school and still had talents to develop. At about that time, as we all know, that was a very ambitious and inclusive and expansive vision of adult education. But at exactly the same time, the long boom ended. And so the Kangen Report came out with this expansive vision. And as almost an unintended consequence is that the vocational education system then became a shock absorber for the labour market. And so whilst there'd been this expansive vision, it then also took on this role in absorbing people who couldn't find work.
So does that, when you say people who couldn't find work, is this where it becomes a pathway through for people who are identified as disadvantaged? And whether disability is a cohort of disadvantaged or separate? And I'm interested, Jen, can I ask you about those concepts?
Yeah, so the SMART and SKILLD program in New South Wales has the following people as categories of disadvantage. It's Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander students, students with disabilities, long-term unemployed people, welfare recipients and their dependents, dependents on a person receiving disability support pension, asylum seekers and refugees, people experiencing domestic or family violence and their dependents, and young people previously or currently in out-of-home care. So that's the current categories of disadvantage under SMART and SKILLD. And they're all groups that the government feel needs extra support in order to gain employment.
But they build on, they build on the Kangen category. So you've got on page twenty-four of the report. I mean, it's quite interesting from a notion of disadvantage has never been done, defined in a kind of academic sense. It's almost been a policy discourse and the categories that Jen read out, essentially an evolution of those categories from Kangen.
So you then had access to quite a lot of material, as you say, the doors were opened. How did you go about the process of undertaking the critical analysis of the vet policy? The quantitative mapping of the scale of disadvantage? And then the quality of data collection? How long did this take and what approach did you do? And I think there's some aspect of taking some in-depth interviews with the participants. So of course, I'm going to ask you to summarize obviously what took a very long time. Just to help, and I think it's helpful for the Royal Commission to understand the method and the approach that you took to the research, which in turn then can help us understand the basis of the findings.
Well, Jen, will I do the first two bits?
Yeah, and then I'll do-
That's new to the qual. Okay. So with the policy research, we got a colleague of mine, Dr. Bruce Smith, who has done a PhD in education and education policy and practice in Australia and worked as a senior public service in Canberra for thirty years. And he's now Associate of Jen's Centre. He wrote that the chapter which got across the, both the continuities and the changes within the notion of disadvantage. Because you've got to remember, the New South Wales Government wanted us to look at disadvantage. And so we had to anchor this in the framing of what, how, what is defined as disadvantage? And how have those categories changed? Which is why on twenty-four, we've shown that deep, deep continuity. Bruce is a very skilled historian, and it's basically historical policy research. Look, I couldn't quantify, I would guess Bruce spent a month to six weeks but building on his deep knowledge of education history and public sector policy and practice. The stats is very much based on descriptive statistics. It's not advanced econometrics or machine learning. It's very much looking at how you bring together material collected through quite diverse sources to get a rich picture of the context. And that was done by me personally. I'm, you know, like I say, I don't get out enough. I really like just getting in there and immersing myself in bucket loads of data and trying to present them in a way which tells a story. So my first trainings in history, but I was trying to tell a story with the stats. And as I mentioned earlier, we anchored it in that insight of beverages and canes that if you want to understand a problem and its roots, you don't necessarily look at the endpoint. So Beveridge and Canes made the point that a lot of people have been studying the unemployed. In the nineteenth century, they used to call it the social question. And it was all about looking at the problem populations. Well, the big shift of Canes and Beveridge is saying, you don't look at the problem, you look at what's causing the problem. So you don't look at the unemployed, you look at unemployment as a dynamic. And so that's why there's all that stuff on the nature of labour demand upfront, which then provides the context for thinking about what's the, what's the size of these populations now? And how are they embedded in the vocational education and training system? So the flow of that chapter took quite a while to work out, but that was, I would guess, the equivalent, two months full-time work spread over, you know, an eighteen-month period. And as I said, the back half of that is the very detailed runs we got off the department system. So I could go on and on, but I mean, I think the main thing to note about what I was doing in the chapter on the stats was establishing that you could use the people with disability subpopulation as a powerful specialist group to shed light on the problem of disadvantage. So there's a sequence, we're looking at the labour market at large, we're looking at the vocational education system within it, we're looking at the disadvantage within that. And then we're taking the people with disability as the pointy end to get into the raw detail. And we explain how you can move through those different levels of aggregation with diversity to shed light on the different developments. But then you can only get so far in mapping out the scale of the problem with the stats. That's where we flicked to Jen to get down into the generative mechanisms.
Right. And Jen, what was the approach taken? Does this part involve the in-depth interviews?
So we did seventy-one in-depth interviews in order to really understand the experience, the sort of multi-dimensional experience of disability in relation to vocational education and training, and then the transition from vocational education, training and into employment. So as part of that, we spoke to sixteen people with disability, six family members and carers, then vocational education trainers, employers, and disability support workers, all with an interest in either employment or vocational education and training.
And in terms, sorry, in terms of the people with disability, we've just referred to disability in our discussion so far in a very generic sense.
Yep.
But were there any features of the nature of disability? So what can you tell us about that, just so that we've got a context in understanding the work that you were doing?
Good thing, okay. So we did ask people about that, and I'll just refer to that here. So we had, ten participants had a form of physical disability, five had intellectual disability, three had autism, and six had mental health diagnosis. So a number of people had three or more types of disability. So it was that they were, that they were talking about.
Now, can I, and I'm just, I'm really keen to get into the findings.
Yes.
So anything else we need to say on methodology?
Two other parts of method. The department was very keen at the outset to involve the sector at large. And we had two policy workshops, which they called hackathons.
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 Hackathons, yeah, appropriated from the IT sector. But it was basically a workshop where we talked to representatives from people with disability, their carers, their educators, disability employment services, we got them all in a room, and we argued key issues out at two points at the commencement of the project and the workshop and initial findings. There were two also very intense workshops within the department itself to kick the tyres hard on what we were finding. So it's not just, and once again, this was not done to, I've been a policy researcher for thirty years. And this was one of the freest projects I've been involved in. They weren't, they weren't having these events to draw a circle around what we could and couldn't say. They were very respectful of what we found, and they just wanted to make sure anything we found would hit the target. Now, they weren't necessarily happy with the way we hit the target, but they wanted to make sure we at least hit the target in terms of how to think about engaging with their interventions in the pocketed system.
Okay. So there wasn't happy news in the findings?
No.
So tell us about the findings. And I'll ask you whether these were findings that you at the outset expected to see or whether there were some interesting findings that may give us a hint to where do we go to from here? So I'll open up to both of you, whoever will want to go first in starting to talk about the findings.
Well, I give an overview, Jen, and then you come in with the detail?
Right, yeah. Why don't you give the quant findings and overview, and then I'll talk about the qualitative findings?
We pulled the overall findings together on page one-one-two. So if you wanted to get it in a nutshell, on page one-twenty, the way you pull all our insights together is to think about the notion of labour flows, the flows of learning and labour. And if you look on page one-one-nine, there's a formal outline of what all the pathways are for somebody making the transition from education to work if they have a disability.
Can I just make sure?
I'm not sure that the pagination you've got in the tender bundle is the same. So I'm just trying to check that we can match those numbers.
If you could give us the paragraph number in the report, that might help because it's also got paragraph numbers rather than pages.
It was section eight-point-two-point-two.
Thank you very much.
Core challenge.
Should have some colored chart for that.
Yeah. And there's one, yes, you're on the, I can see you've got the right chart. Yes.
All right, so just, and I'll just put this on just so we can keep a record of the transcript. So for the document reference, CMD twenty-backslash-four-three-one-seven-four. And then at the bottom of the page, one-twenty-eight, and then the red graph is page one-twenty-nine. So our numbers might be a little out of sync from yours, but we'll do our best to follow along. I don't know, it might be late in the day to see if the team can perhaps put this up on the screen, if that's helpful, the page one-twenty-nine.
We can still explain it, though, I mean, and you used the expression, it wasn't a happy finding.
Yes.
Look, I think it's, it's a bit too, it's a bit too global. Because what we show on what, on that diagram, yeah, that one, yeah, is that where the system works well, it works exceptionally well, all right? So, you know, I interviewed along with Ivy, some exceptionally good educators in Western Sydney, very talented and dedicated principals who spend a lot of time developing structured programs, have deep links with employers. They have very engaged disability employment service support people and a network of employers who want to do the right thing. And that's, that's the flow, right? That's the top flow. But-
That's a good practice.
That's the good practice. But the tendencies within the system are to deviate from that practice because, first of all, there's a lot of under-resourcing. A lot of the DESs are under-resourced, given the scale of the challenge. Many employers, first of all, are not engaged at all. And in some cases, they're only engaged marginally and often for opportunistic reasons. So we said whilst there is the idea of a best practice flow, there's a downward tendency to what we call the compliance-driven flow. And so the challenge, and because we were writing for the vocational education department, saying, well, what can you actually do in this space? And that's, that's like the second big positive finding we found. That as a legacy of the Kangen interventions, New South Wales TAFE and the adult community education sector have built up specialized entities that have deep expertises in helping people with disability navigate the complex world that is both education and work. And so that's, if you like, a second positive finding. But our empirical finding was that that legacy is withering. Right? And we didn't quite explain it earlier on, but the under SMART and SKILLD, the thing we were actually brought in to formally evaluate is what's called the loadings. So whilst the Kangen vision of support for people with disability was that you built up specialized expertise that would provide support, the idea of the loadings is that you disperse those funds to individual training providers. So that, for instance, if you're teaching, providing a CERT two in basic education, you will get ten percent on the four hundred and fifty dollar fee. So that if you've got someone with disability, they'll get an extra forty-five dollars. So that if you've got someone with disability, they'll get an extra forty five dollars. If you have somebody doing a construction apprenticeship, that course costs thirteen thousand dollars, so you'll get an extra one thousand three hundred dollars. And so we found that this was not actually a terribly effective way of putting support in. So, like I said, whilst the third, the second finding was where you had this constellation of expertise, it did make a difference, but that's withering. And um, the design principle of smart and skilled, which is part of the training market vision of how you do these things. Uh, is actually not nurturing a critical mass of expertise.
What, and can I ask you, why did you get any sort of sense? Is it the under lack of the expertise or under resourcing or complexity of systems that have tended to change? Um, on a not infrequent basis?
Well, it's a design principle, like um, whilst the categories of disadvantage have remained stable, and I mentioned that to you earlier from Kangan. Through to Kirby, through to the NEVAC report in twenty eleven. The underlying structure of the vocational education system has changed. Um, the, the vision that came out of Kangan is that vocational education should be essentially run like schools and universities. Critical mass of funding, a block, block funding, there should be um. Resources devoted to curriculum and pedagogy, and there is a sense of professionalism. With the shift to competency-based training, there's been a whole shift away from that notion, and the idea is that you create a trading market. People buy the competencies they want, uh, structured around very narrowly defined qualifications. And so the, the model for supporting people with disability was to attach a loading to the operation of funds flying through a training market. Whereas the Kangan vision was you built up critical masses of expertise within an institutional base.
On, on that market approach, though, if um, if there's greater supply than demand, how does that fit with this model?
Greatest.
Greatest, so there's more people being trained and available for employers, but fewer jobs.
Yeah.
Then employers can choose who they want.
But that's in, that's under any system, though, I mean, TAFE was churning out a whole lot of qualified people, that's a problem of the um, deficient demand. The, 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 the problem with the loadings is that private providers. Uh, are not geared up to have, I mean, these units can sometimes have, you know, five, ten, fifteen people in them in TAFE. You know, they provide people with advice on course selection, uh, they can provide them with advice on how to do study. They can provide support to the student in the classroom. If you're a private provider with five hundred students, you can't have that kind of expertise. And this is where fragmenting the funding around a particular student in a particular course is, is problematic. So that.
Yep.
That, that's a summary of the overall framework, but Jen and her team got a lot more detail on how that actually plays out.
Yeah, so I suppose we added colour to um, to those findings. So do you want me to explain the.
Yes, please.
Qualitative perspective, okay, um, so um. In terms of, I suppose, some underlying points that I could make about it is that. On the whole, people felt that they were getting a good experience from vocational education and training. Um, but that good experience is very much tempered by an environment of. I suppose, poor disability confidence amongst people with disability. So people felt, because of the stigma and discrimination that they'd dealt with through their um lives up until that point. Um, and sort of a layering of um. Disadvantage, so people come into vocational education and training with this whole experience of, of having lived in an environment where people with disability are marginalised. Because of stigma, because of discrimination, but because of all sorts of other things like poverty or. Um, other unconnected things like people living in rural areas. People were coming in and, and lacking confidence in completing their education. But then, in terms of really relevant to this inquiry, making the step into employment and feeling confident in being able to do that at the end of a qualification as well. Um, so that really impacting on them. But then a lack of, a, a lack of disability competence within the vocational education and training system. So people talked about it being very patchy. So they would go to one provider and have an excellent experience because the trainer was very up on disability and really understood it. Whereas going to another provider, even within TAFE, not just TAFE and red, as opposed to registered training organisations. Then they were not having such a good experience. Um, and then that also lack of disability understanding being a, a problem when they went to seek employment. Because employers were basing their understanding of their abilities and attributes on. S- social stigma and um, that sort of stigmatized environment, rather than understanding anything really about disability. So poor disability understanding in the community was really impacting on, on people. We made an effort to talk to providers both within TAFE and registered training organisations, so that we weren't just focusing on TAFE. And like John was saying, um, TAFE was better set up for supporting people with disability. Because of the large size, but also a long history of, of supporting people. Whereas registered training organisations could be quite small and not have the capacity to do that. So that's a, a real problem because it's meant to be an open, um, you know, market where people can go wherever they want to get the skills they want. But they're not getting the disability support to enable them to get the skills unless they're going to a, a larger organisation. Um, similarly, people in, in regional and rural areas, and we focus specifically on a rural area as one of our case studies. Were not getting um, always the support that people got in the city, which is a, you know, a common thing. But it's worth pointing out because we don't have an even playing field for people with disability across Australia in terms of the regions.
Um, yeah, sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay, um, I think some of the things that really helped were, where there was good cross-sector collaboration. So where organised vocational education training organisations were strongly embedded in the community, they knew the employers in their community. Um, and they knew the disability support providers. When that, when there were good connections across all of those sectors, then there were better outcomes, I think, for people as well. I think that there was um, a tendency amongst some vocational education providers to say, oh, well, disability is all done by the NDIS now. So we, we don't need to do anything anymore because that's disability is the NDIS. And I think that that is, um, is still a prevalent understanding. And, and of course, a lot of these people, they didn't get NDIS support that we spoke to. So, um, yeah, I think that's important, too. Another really important thing um, was exposure to work was seen as, as essential for people. Um, getting employment, and that's not just because it, it raises the competence of people with disability to go into the workforce. Um, and that they have those um, skills, um, but also it, it. It means that employers have more exposure to people with disability as well. So that programmes where there was exposure to work were, were helpful all around. Um, so, yeah, is there any, let me know what else you want me to talk about, there's a huge amount of stuff.
Yeah, there is, and, and I'm mindful of the time, so. Uh, because the next thing I want to ask is where do we go from here and, and other factors? But I might pause at this point to see if the commissioners have any questions that they want to ask you about what you've said so far in the particular findings. Commissioners.
Yes, Commissioner Galbly.
Um, yes, I'd like to ask a question about um, art, artios, but especially TAFE courses. Actually discriminating against people with disabilities. We heard this morning, for example, about a young woman with Down syndrome who was pretty good at computing and wanted to do. Basic computing, and they said, no, there's no way we can have you. And then she was sent to a, um, a disability-specific course that didn't sound like it was what she'd wanted to do. So, um, back in the old days, of course, not, not a long time ago. Um, you could ring up and say you wanted to do computing at your local, you know, adult training. And they'd say, if you said you were disabled, they'd get you to do disabled computing because they got a special loading for that. And I wondered about all of that, thanks.
Yeah, so there was. It worked, it worked both ways, so um. Some people were not able to do their course of choice because it was not offered in an accessible format or in the sort of format that they needed. So often, there's been sort of a congregating of courses, and it's particularly problematic for, say, people with disability in rural areas. Where they can't, they might not be able to do a course online, so then they're stuck with the courses that are done in person in their own area, which is quite limited. Um, but also some people are being pushed into courses that were completely inappropriate because of the disability employment services or job active. Um, services pushing them into an inappropriate course because of some sort of, I, I, I'm not quite sure how it works, but. Um, them getting some sort of incentive to put people into a certain certificate level. And so they talked quite a bit about that being a problem. Um, there's sort of this idea that people with disability, if we can get them into any course, then that's okay. Or if we can get them into any job, then that's okay, but what we're forgetting about is careers. We're just thinking, our, our bar is so low that we think any course, any job. But we're not thinking about actually people with disability having careers like anyone else. Um, and um, I think that the system is set up for the any job, any course thing, as long as it's ticking off. Um, yeah, so.
Could I, could I just back you on that, Jen? Because in the policy hackathons, this issue was discussed. And the, the problem that was reported to us more was that often people with disability were picking courses that they thought they would. They would like, like apparently animal studies is quite popular, but the prospects of employment are quite remote. So there is, uh, I'm not discounting what you heard this morning, but from the policy hackathon that we picked up, there was um. That was more the issue that the educators were reporting, and they weren't, they weren't stopping people, they were saying, well, what would you like to do? And the default for a lot of people was not necessarily terribly practical. That said, in the data that I report and summarise in section three point six. Um, most people with disability concentrate their studies in one of six areas, right? And that does include ICT, and they are in areas of relatively high demand. So whilst we hear about these imperfections, like Jen said. We will talk about what's not working, but for a lot of people, this is working. You know, there are imperfections, but you know, it, it's not like a complete disaster. Um, that said, um, we are a bit worried that the legacies that have kept the current system going are atrophying. So, but at the moment, you, you know, there is an infrastructure to work with.
Just check any other commissioners.
Yeah, Commissioner Rattinson.
My question is, um, how can we extrapolate this, or can we? I mean, it's excellent qualitative and quantitative research, which is the brilliance of both sides of research brought together. Can this be extrapolated to other states and territories? Are we likely to find the same results if we replicated the studies?
I think that the thing that, I think that the thing that would be different. Um, would be in terms of the way that TAFE funding has reduced in other states. So New South Wales has a relatively, and John can talk about this more eloquently than me, but. Uh, New South Wales still has a quite a robust and strong TAFE system, whereas in other states, there's, it's a much higher rate of. Um, registered training organisations as opposed to TAFE.
I think that's exactly right, so we, we actually haven't validated it to that extent, but it is well known that New South Wales has. Um, preserved a, a central infrastructure in a way that many other states haven't, much like in COVID. You know, it prevent, New South Wales defended its public health and infrastructure in way that other states haven't. So this, in a sense, this is probably the high watermark for Australia, right, this is not typical.
I don't have a question, more of a lament.
Hmm.
I'm becoming increasingly confused as the week goes on. It's true that I start from a high base of confusion, but it's got even more confused, and the reason is. There may be a number of reasons, but the reason from the evidence is, this is all astonishingly complicated.
Hmm.
It's become, I see that in sec, in section four, you've attempted to integrate the NDIS and the DES. And every other programme that you can think of.
Hmm.
What we have in fact is, we have six states, two territories, and as you've just said, they will be very different. The funding, as I understand it, of TAFE and these other organi, private organisations is different. The private organisations don't, generally speaking, have a fantastic history of outcomes. To integrate those into a system where you're seeking to provide assistance to people with disability. Seems to me to have all sorts of complications of the kind that you've identified, but I suspect that there are many others.
Hmm.
How on earth do we go about rationalising all of this between Commonwealth and state programmes? Bearing in mind that the ground changes on an almost monthly basis?
Look, that's a question I've done a lot of thinking about and done a lot of work on, yeah, yeah. And, and my starting point is, don't give it to the Commonwealth.
Don't give it to.
Don't give it to.
You've just, you've just warmed the cockles of Commissioner Atkins' heart.
Right, um, I am, I've watched this space and I've researched in this space now for thirty years. And by and large, anything that's good that's survived has been because the states have held in there and stopped some really dumb ideas coming to Canberra. Can I say, I was trained as a public servant in Canberra, you know, I'm, I'm a product of that system. So, and, 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 and I, I don't, I've actually written on the submission to the Productivity Commission around this stuff, which I'm happy to share with you.
Yeah.
Well, but the, the, the really interesting thing, I think, is. Um, Australia's response to COVID has shown what can happen when you have creative federalism, right? And.
I wish I hadn't asked you this question.
No.
Quite convenient to me because this is the next topic that I wanted to finish on.
Because, but Australia does have, and in this space, it was working towards a kind of creative federalism. Um, around an institution called Skills Australia. And now that was a federal body, but it, it didn't dictate. It saw its role as facilitating agreement, but with coherent leadership. It's, it's, look, it's quite a complicated art, but to me, in something as complicated as vocational education. You've got employers, you've got unions, you've got educators, you've got different state governments having a role. You, you've got to have a sense of negotiated coherence, trying to come in over the top. We've had, I mean, you keep talking about a similar problem in the UK, he calls the vet system in the UK the world's biggest train set. Because policymakers come along every couple of years and disassemble it and then reassemble it. As Australia's vet system's had a similar sort of problem. And so for me, I think you've got to have a creative federalism. Can I say, I'm, I, I, when I was a young radical, I was committed to destroying the Senate and getting rid of the states. You know, that was the kind of condition I was raised in. The older I've got, I've actually come to.
You're now an old radical.
Well, some people would never recognise me from what I was, but I, 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 I'm, I'm just watched a lot evolve. And for me, I think the trick is to actually get um, dynamic federalism. It's not, not, not getting rid of the Commonwealth and handing it all back to the states, it's actually getting, getting it working together. And for me, just to finish line, that's, you saw that work really well in Australia around the AIDS crisis. And you've seen that work really well around this crisis. So it, it, there is an element within Australian public policy which allows these things to happen, and that's, that's, that's the sentiment I think we should have tried to imagine.
Unscramble the NDIS egg, that in your terms, in superimposed states, and indeed has overtaken state programmes.
It was negotiated, though, that was negotiated, and the states went along with that, and the states were quite clear about what was going on. Um.
I wasn't implying they didn't know what was going on, I'm just saying, Commonwealth has come in over the system.
And it's a very static object in a system, so all the other parts have to move around the NDIS and in relation to it. So it adds that type of complexity, I think. So it adds that type of complexity, I think.
All right.
But I'm
I probably identified the next research approach. Thank you.
Uh I I suppose we'll just come back to the final paragraph in the outline of evidence, which is paragraph sixteen. And I think you've touched already on some of these, but I might just start with Jen. In terms of possible new directions policy, mindful that we too don't want to become train set um deputies, um how does one approach this? Jen, have you got any views from the research that you've done as to where to from here?
Um, well, John's better at the the bigger picture, but in terms of what's worked in other jurisdictions or what they've tried in other jurisdictions, then um um disability employment quotas have been used in um many European countries to some effect. Um and what that does is it's, it means that um organisations might might feel enabled to have people with disability because of that external driver, but then become more confident about, because they've got people with disability in their organisations, they actually understand disability more. And so therefore, their workplace develops because they're sort of forced to take people with disability. The problem is, for those people with disability, it can be problematic um in terms of coming into an organisation that's not prepared for them. And it doesn't work with everyone. But um that is something that has worked in European countries. So they have taxation breaks, for example, for um employing people with disability or penalties in the case of Germany, where the companies will pay a penalty if they don't reach a certain quota for employees with disability.
We're on that. We've heard um that some companies are happy to pay the penalty because the penalty is a smaller cost than the costs associated with implementing a target. So i- i- is that a a concern in terms of how targets and penalties might operate?
Uh yeah, so it's not going to do very much. Well, it does less for companies that are already not on board with disability. So things like um flexi jobs or um, you know, um extra money given to organisations employing people with disability. It's always companies that are already on the page with disability that are, find those things attractive. But smaller companies with no experience, they're not going to take it on. So we're not meeting that part of the sector with those types of approaches.
Yeah. John, any final views from you on new possible directions? And I note, I mean, there's procurement issues, but um I'm interested by this idea of a creation of a competitive disability market that takes into account the concept of mass unemployment, underemployment and joblessness.
Sure.
For people with disability on the edge of that, is there a way of putting them in the centre of that? And is that what what you've got in mind?
Yeah, look, I I'd respond to your question, where to from here. I think you I'd segment it two ways. What what's the deep underlying issue that you've got to be thinking about in the long run? And then what can you do in the short run? And um you know, the the material I summarised there from the OECD on the problem of joblessness is is worth reading. It's only two or three pages. The OECD report's about seventy pages long. No one cites it because it's too rigid and very detailed. But when you grind through it, that's a huge finding. Twenty-three percent of the workforce, jobless. Right? That's that they use here, don't they?
Pre-COVID?
Pre-COVID.
So post-COVID or pre-COVID, what the numbers are going to be?
They're north from there, they're north from there. And so um that's, the the shadow of that is over everything that we're looking at. Where you've got that amount of excess labour in the labour market, you have a problem, a deep problem in it. Everyone's been running around Australia saying Australia's the envy of the Western world, thirty years of uninterrupted growth, unemployment rates of five percent. We've been living in a fool's paradise. At the, at the, in the bottom reaches of the labour market, it's been extremely unpleasant for a very long time.
And who's in that bottom range?
And that's why, and you know, I'm sorry, it's only taken me thirty years to get this point. I haven't followed the disability data. Like, I've been a labour market researcher, but I, when I put that time series together, I just sat back and I just thought, wow. That stability of stagnant workforce participation rate, that's pretty interesting. I that, you know, and and you might have noticed I quoted in there the Disability Commissioner back in was looking in the year two thousand, back twenty years and saying, nothing's changed. So that's what happens to the most vulnerable members of a society when the economy is operating at less than a full employment level. So there's a, there's a big structural problem, which, you know, this isn't a Royal Commission in the full employment. That's, that's, that's for somebody else.
I could be an answer. Forgot everything else.
But and this is something that I mentioned when I was talking to um councillor beforehand. COVID has come right in the middle of this Royal Commission. And I think I put the challenge to you. Um what does a disability-friendly recovery look like? You know, I think when you're, when you're in the middle of a crisis, the the way you start out has a huge impact on the way in which the recovery evolves. And I I would, my suggestion, like I say, this New South Wales government was asking for this advice, but I'd be saying we should be looking at a disability or a disadvantaged friendly recovery. Not, you don't say, we'll wait till we get gross back and then we'll look after them. That never happens. We've now got thirty years of evidence of that, right? We've had thirty years on up to growth, and you've had that standard participation rate. And so for me, I think there's got to be, that's got to be the big vision. And I heard um the Commissioner Sackville on Radio National, talking about your report about um the impact of COVID. And you made the really simple, powerful point. We've got to start our policies with the most vulnerable and work from there. We don't look at them as an afterthought, they become the reference point. Brilliant starting point for thinking about the employment policy for coming out of COVID. That's a big call, right? So that's the big picture. I think you can do something, and that's going to be hard this year. But I do think um you can do something uh around the ideas that Jen's been talking about. I think the idea of quotas supported by tax breaks is really good. Because I started life in the public service uh in nineteen eighty-three, coming out of the recession then. And I worked on the Community Employment Programme. And the vision of that programme was you had to give people some experience of work so that they could jump the queue. It was a recognised, it was going to take years to get unemployment down, but you wanted to spread the jobs around, so it just wasn't concentrated on the most vulnerable. And if you have a quota supported by tax, you'll at least try and get that participation rate up. Now, the overall unemployment rate might, or underemployment rate might remain quite high. But if you've got quotas there, you will get more people into positions than would otherwise. And um we've seen, you might have noticed in my report, the Indigenous crowd has done a lot better than the disabled because they've had their clear targets and they've had, they've had a concerted campaign, you know, closing the gap. Now, they haven't solved the problem, but their participation rate's gone up full eight percent, eight percent, eight percent from forty percent. That's, in labour market terms, that's really big. That's really significant. Um but the the final suggestion I'd make in the, in the the medium to short term is Australia does have some really good institutions and and they're often overlooked, right? I know TAFE's been run down, but there there is still an infrastructure there. You know, we discovered in New South Wales, you still have these constellations of expertise. Let's work with them. Let's revitalise them before they die off. There's another institution called group training, which actually came out of the um crisis of the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties. The apprenticeship system was on the verge of serious collapse in construction engineering. And group apprenticeship schemes emerged as basically ethical labour hire. Individual employers were scared, they didn't want to take on apprentices. So local councils or local employer associations took on the role of employer and then identified fragments of jobs which the apprentices could be sent to. And that would, that meant that um what was latent demand could be turned into manifest demand by overcoming the coordination problem of having a central employer called the group training scheme. And I think if the commission's interested in that stuff, I'm happy to write you a discussion note on how you could take this principle of sharing the risk. Look, you know, life's really hard. You know, I've been studying workplaces now for thirty years. It's harder now than it's ever been. Being an employer is not much fun, you know? And you you just can't simply mandate that employers do this. And I cite the example in there on the overseas experience, the Norwegians sling a lot of support. And if someone puts their hands up to take on someone with disability in Norway, there's a support system comes in from what used to be, what we would used to have called the Commonwealth Employment Service. That's, that's what we've, we've masterminded here with this notion of group training. You have another body that actually takes the full responsibility for employment, but then shares the obligation of actually um defining the job, training them on the job, handling performance issues, that is shared. And I think that way you can take the sting out of any quotas. If you say a quota in a tax system, it's not just stick and carrot. There's also active support with something like a a group training scheme coming around.
I, we could continue. I'm conscious of the time, uh but I wanted to thank, I know, and this time I will stop. But I wanted to thank both um uh John and Jen this afternoon for the generosity of their time and their thinking about these issues. And commissioners, you have the material, which I'll ask you to mark the outline as exhibit nine point twenty-three and the com- accompanying material, including the report as nine point twenty-three point one through to nine point twenty-three point four. And I'm not going to ask commissioners if you've got any further questions and suggest that concludes the evidence for today.
Yes, I also thank you both very much for your evidence. For myself, I've only had a chance to skim the papers that you've done, the research, but I intend to look very carefully at them when the times are a little less frantic, like second half of January. Uh but your evidence has been extremely stimulating, very interesting. You've raised some questions, structural questions, that I think are unavoidable for us to address, whether we can actually resolve them is perhaps another question. Uh but you have pointed out, I think, very clearly the dimensions of the issues that need to be addressed. So thank you both very much for your contribution to the work of the commission.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for inviting us.
Um I think we can now adjourn until ten thirty Sydney time tomorrow, nine thirty Brisbane time. Thank you.
Thank you. The Royal Commission is now adjourned.